Connect to the open session.
Good evening, everyone. We are still waiting for a few folks to join in, so please give us one more minute, and then we will begin tonight's meeting. All right, we have still a few people checking in, but I will call the meeting to order. So thank you very much for coming to our regularly scheduled council meeting for October 12th. If at this point, please stand and face the appropriate direction for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to propose a slight adjustment to tonight's agenda. So this is a little bit out of regular procedure, but our first agenda item for this evening is to consider a resolution to extend the ability to meet virtually. And I think, given the fact that we are meeting virtually, we should cover this so that the entire meeting is an approved format. So counselors, if you can weigh in on that, any objections to covering that first and then moving back into the consent counter, so really just covering that first item, and then picking up the agenda where we left off? Sound good?
Yes, I approve.
So if we could, again, this is a little bit out of sequence, but I just want to make sure that we are covering our bases. So Eli, if you don't mind covering this first resolution, let's see, it's on page... Let's see, I'm getting there. All right, so it looks like page 36 of our packet, Discussion Decision Regarding Resolution 2021-12 Authorizing Continued Use of Virtual Meetings. Eli, anything that you want to introduce or discuss, rather, regarding this first agenda item?
Just the fact that, well, we do have Russ Dance, our attorney, on the line. The resolution was prepared by Ryan from his office, and it's a resolution for the City Council of the City of Trinidad, making findings pursuant to the Government Code Section 54953 as amended by Assembly Bill 361, and authorizing the continued use of virtual meetings. So that's the bottom line of it, and as you said, it does appear, it's actually page 39 on my agenda. And I don't know if you need me to read any further, but I think that just reading the title was sufficient.
Russ, do you have anything to add to that from your perspective?
Yeah, just briefly, so this is a newly adopted Assembly Bill signed by the governor. It's recently, September 17, 2021. In essence, it does continue the Zoom meeting protocol as an accepted mechanism under the Brown Act. You do, however, as a council, have to renew these findings every 30 days under the current law. So what you'll likely do is see this on future agenda items, so long as the pandemic concerns continue, and you want to proceed with the ability for Zoom meetings. So what our recommendation is going to be is you basically just adopt a resolution extension, and we'll calendar that for 30 days' time, so you have it, you know, on a monthly cycle until the law changes again. Again, the law does require you to renew these findings every 30 days, the primary finding being that if the COVID-19 pandemic valid and necessary reason exists to continue meeting by Zoom is basically what it is.
And I'm assuming that a consent counter would be an adequate way to renew that, this resolution?
Yeah, I believe we could probably proceed by consent counter for renewals.
Okay, and then Richard, I think I saw your hand go up, but I'm not sure. I was closing a document.
I couldn't find the page number, but I got a 39.
It is 39. I wonder why my packet says...
There was a new packet sent out by Gabe. It should be packet underscore zero instead of one. Has the latest...
I have, oh, not underscore zero. I have underscore one.
To the city website?
Gabe had sent it out by email, the latest.
Yeah, I didn't get that, so...
Yeah, my packet says underscore zero. So unless underscore one is the more recent, but that's not the way it's sent out.
I'm here, I can make a comment on that if there's...
Yeah, please do.
Yeah, I think it was yesterday, I updated the packet with Eli's staff report. So I reloaded, I just took it down and I reloaded it and put it back up on the website. I didn't send anything out directly. So if someone downloaded the packet this weekend, or maybe even yesterday, the only thing different would be one page, I believe, maybe two pages. It was the City Manager's Staff Report that was added to the packet.
Got it, thank you very much. I did do mine over the weekend, so thank you for that explanation. So, all right, I just want to make sure that we have the resolution before us. Any comments, questions regarding the resolution from the city? Any public comment regarding this resolution? All right, seeing none, Mr. Adams, if you don't mind doing a roll call vote, that would be great.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so let me look to that page. So the motion would be to adopt Resolution 2021-12, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Trinidad Making Findings Pursuant to Government Code Section 54953 As Amended by Assembly Bill 361, and Authorizing Continued Use of Virtual Meetings. We'll start with a roll call vote. Councilmember Davies?
Aye.
Grover?
Aye.
Columbus?
Aye.
Wes?
Aye.
And Mayor Ladwig?
Yes.
Passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. All right, so thank you for allowing us to shift up our schedule. So we'll go back to the agenda as stated. So at this point, we are reconvening from closed session, there are no reportable actions from closed session. And so at this point, then, if we could have approval of the rest of the agenda for this evening.
Make a motion that we approve the agenda as modified this evening.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a first by Mr. Grover, a second by Mr. West. Any discussion, any public comment, rather, regarding the agenda? All right, bringing it back. Gabe, if you don't mind again?
So motion by Councilmember Grover and seconded by West to approve the modified agenda. Councilmember Davies?
Aye.
Columbus?
Aye.
Grover?
Aye.
West?
Yes.
Ladwig?
Yes.
Passed unanimously.
Thank you again. So our minutes will be considered at the meeting in November. So we'll move on to council reports and committee assignments. Let's start with Mr. Davies.
Nothing to report, thank you.
Okay, Mr. West?
This is very brief, but if you've noticed, the off-ramp 2299 is getting close to being finished. They had trouble with the corridor project, but they think they've straightened that out, so you'll see that making, moving on, and they're still working on the Broadway project. There should be a lot of information about the Broadway project, and it's an interesting one. So if you have the time, you may want to look it up and see what their plan is, if you haven't seen it. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Columbus?
Yes, I'd like to share my screen. There we go. Can everyone see that?
Yep.
Can you hear me? Go through this as quickly as I can. California Coastal National Monument Gateway Committee had the Trinidad Appreciation Weekend on the 25th and 26th with multiple different activities that were considered COVID-safe. And about 25 people did participate in cleaning up Scenic Drive, which was great. I got a call from Susan Rotwine today, and I'd like to make sure that everyone's aware that the crab season will be open soon. But more importantly, the 26th Annual Blessing of the Trinidad Fleet, which is held every year, it'll be at the flagpole at the top of Trinity and Edward Street Thanksgiving morning, November 25th at 10:00 a.m. And it's kind of a unique event in Trinidad every year of the Cruzea Local Fishing Fleet giving thanks for the pound of the harvest, and they receive a blessing for the upcoming season. Axel Lingerin III will give his traditional native blessing, he sings in four different directions, followed by a non-denominational blessing. And for those that don't want to attend, they're going to try to stream this again live on Facebook, so that if people can't make it up to the top of the hill, they can go ahead and watch it on Facebook as well. Next up is the Trinidad Water Advisory Committee. Certainly, the purpose and objectives are well-known to the council and the public. The committee members are myself, Councilman Grover, Cheryl Kelly, Planning Commission Chair, Dwight Miller, and Bryce Kenny. And we've done a number of different reports since July, and I'm going to let Eli go into details, but I'm very happy to announce that one of the two big issues, fixing water pipe leaks and enhancing our water storage, there's been a grant application submitted to help with that. So I'm just very pleased as the committee chair that the work that the committee members have done on critical water resiliency, it impacts everyone in Trinidad, but hopefully will begin to move down the path of greater resiliency. So I want to thank the committee members for their hard work to make all that happen, very pleased for that. Next, I just want to clear up any questions about how Leffinholz Creek cubic feet per second calculations are done. And I got an email yesterday from Ryan Desmet, Director of Public Works, who sends me simply a screenshot. And what the screenshot had is the time of day, and then the cubic feet per second flow, and it's done about every eight minutes. So between two minutes after midnight yesterday and 9:00 a.m., there were 70 measurements made that were logged in by the system. So you simply copy them onto a spreadsheet manually, you add them up, divide by the number of measurements, and you get the average flow for that particular nine-hour period, which is .579 cubic feet per second. And if you look at that nine-hour period, there's certainly ups and downs, there are peaks and troughs. It's, again, water flowing downhill, and then you have a trend line. So if you plug that in, and someone next month will be able to do this, I'll be able to help Mr. Grover and others to do it, just to orient folks. The blue is last year, that's when Pacific Watershed actually came out to the creek and made manual measurements every time. The gold is when we had the telemetry system put in. So we had this great rain in June, it was terrific. And then you have a stage-one drought in July, followed by a stage-two drought in August. And then we had rain around September, right for my birthday, it's a great present to have that. And then if we look at today's or yesterday's flow, we're now at 0.58. So I just want to make sure where that's the plot, it goes up and down and so forth, there's a trend line. But also, Pacific Watershed Associates will be talking about, they made their first measurement at Mill Creek. And Mill Creek was 0.13, it's the dot kind of right there at the bottom. So just to sum up where we are, the city drought kind of report card, the preference card, we're at stage two, which means the flow is below 0.86. There is no shortage of water, if you turn your tap on, it's going to run, you could probably run it all day long. But the concept is that when we get below .86, it's really mandatory use restriction about having a regulator and a hose, you're not supposed to water your lawn during the day, a number of different things to try to conserve water for the community. Finally, I took a walk down to the creek again, just to see how it was doing, brought my iPhone along, took a photograph. What was interesting is that Tom Candrian, next door from West Haven, Patrick's Point Lagoon, wrote a note, and I really didn't realize this until he sent it in. And what he said was, between 40 and 35 years ago, I used to fish and swim in the creek at and above the water plant. Then around 8687, 1987, the water turned black, and as I followed the source, it was coming from a logging operation on the left fork above the water district station. My swimming hole filled in and all the fish disappeared. And I understand that the creek is getting rehabilitated, hopefully it'll begin to improve a bit. But this is really where we are today, and we'll have some discussions tonight, which I'm hoping will lead to some action by the council to increase water resiliency. Whatever that action is, I'm not particularly prone to one or another, but I'm hoping that the council will make a decision so that, long-term, the city can survive with water. So that's my report, thank you for allowing me to share my screen. Did we lose the mayor?
Okay, Steve, are you, can you hear us? All right, so we have Tom and Richard David, do you have anything to talk?
Yeah, I went to Redwood Coast Energy Authority, and a lot of what's going on is going to, they're growing because the offshore wind is really taking off, is Humboldt being one of the prime areas for that, 23 miles offshore. So that's pretty exciting, plus not to mention the airport solar rate being up. That's pretty much, you know, things going regularly there. But in my capacity for the Water Shortage Response Team, now I've been attending webinars. I went to Climate and Community Resilience CORE is the acronym for that, if anybody wants to look at that up. It's got a lot of good tips, you know, anything from single user to companies, you know, to big companies. I also attended Sanctuary Forest webinar on water storage systems, that's the Matola River. You know, they almost ran out of water, they don't have a big population, they don't have a lot of resources, but they utilize what they had and they made it work. So that's encouraging, you know, in the right situations, you can do a lot. That's recorded, all those webinars are recorded, if anybody ever wants to review them and get own ideas for their own homes, or for the city, or for their business, or whatever. So that's about it for my report this month.
I am still waiting to see if our mayor is going to return, so... Well, let's go to Eli, we've got committee, I've got all the council reports, so Eli, how about you? What do you got for us from your reports?
Okay. First, I was just going to take a quick look to see if we have from the sheriff's, but I do not see on here, so I'll proceed. So I have the City Manager's Report, first of all, regarding Ryan Desmet, who is our water plant operator and public works director. He is going to pursue a career change, and we definitely will be missing him. He will continue in an interim arrangement, we're still working out the details of the interim arrangement. And as a result, you know, he's been here for a number of years in the city, and he will be missed because he's an integral part of the Public Works and the water plant. And then, yeah, in addition to whatever Ryan is able to do on a contract basis for us, we will be supplementing that with some other entities. We've been reaching out to other operators and would be able to get some people in place on a temporary basis. We're also doing recruitment for the position, which will be closing near the end of the month. Other than that, I did want to indicate about a couple of things that are coming up. One of them is the Live Well Humboldt, it's a data work group, and it's dealing with the Humboldt Public Health Branch of the Community Health Assessment and also Community Health Improvement Plan. So every three to five years, the county, in partnership with stakeholders, including various cities, prepares these public health plans for the county. And that will be kicking off on October 15th, so I'll be participating in that. Also, I wanted to note that on the City Manager's Report, the very last item is Climate Change and Sea Level Rise Vulnerability Assessment. And on September 29th, the Trinidad Coastal Land Trust hosted a webinar to present the results of the U.S. Geological Survey on Climate Change and Sea Level Rise Vulnerability. The survey was done in assessing Trinidad's coastline along with Point Arena. And those were the two areas that were presented as part of the Bureau of Land Management in that webinar. And part of the California Coastal National Monument. So I do have the link at the bottom of the City Manager's Report to that webinar that was hosted by the Trinidad Coastal Land Trust. So if anyone is interested in seeing the U.S. Geological Survey results, they would be available there. As far as the cell tower, our remaining cell tower on Trinidad Head is one that's by Verizon. And Verizon, in addition to one tower that they have located already in the city, or right outside the city limits off of Quarry Road, they're putting another tower in West Haven. And the latest update I received as of yesterday is that the West Haven cell tower is progressing, and the tower construction will be done by the middle of November. And they're planning on having power supplied to it by the end of November. And then it will, hopefully, if everything goes well, then by the beginning of the year, they will be able to take out the existing tower that's on Trinidad Head. They've told me that, and I've specifically requested that we want to make sure that the level of service is equal to or better than what we currently have. And that's all I have in my update, if there's any questions.
Regarding that, Eli, will we be notified that, you know, on Monday from 12:00 to 6:00, we should all check our cellphone signals? You know what I mean, is there a way to know when that test is being done so that when the switch is made, it's done so with our input?
Yeah, when I was planning on having them do, and then I could ask them if they want to do it that way. But I was planning on, as soon as they notified me that they have put the other two online as a test, then I will go ahead and reach out to people that have Verizon throughout the community. So ideally, if everyone who has Verizon just lets us know, then we can reach out to them. The city does use Verizon, through all of our city employees have Verizon. So this way, you know, we could test it throughout the city, and, you know, test our phones in moving them around in different areas. But yes, if people could let us know if they have Verizon, and we can notify them and see how their service is.
Very good. Any other questions or comments for Eli? All right, seeing David, I'm sorry, my internet cut out. David, were you able to finish your report? Okay, good. I don't have anything to report. The groups that I meet with didn't have any Trinidad-related business to report on. So at this point, we will move on to the items from the floor. So at this time, members of the public may comment on items not appearing on the agenda. Individual comments will be limited to three minutes or less. Comments should be directed to the council as a whole and not to individual council members or staff. Council and staff responses will be minimal for non-agenda items. And for the duration of this evening, if we could really work with the hand raising, that really helps me trying to keep the meeting flowing, so please raise your hand when you wish to... Sorry, if you could raise your hand using the Zoom feature, that way those hands go to a place that is easy for me to find. So we'll start with Mr. Bruce. Dick, are you...
Yeah, I was just trying to mute, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one thing to point out in terms of the roads in the city. That new rainwater catchment area across from the Catholic Church at the corner of Hector and Underwood, the west side of the edge of the road there is really breaking down, and it's going to become more and more of a problem. I don't know if the bus drives over that, or if it's just people making a turn there, but it's something the city should look into in terms of getting that repaired before you lose a lot more of that pavement. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw another hand, Ms. Thompson?
My husband Bill and I would like to give a shout-out and a thank-you to Richard Columbus for his outstanding work as Trinidad's council member, Chair for the Water Advisory Committee, and Member of the Water Ad Hoc Committee. Councilmember Columbus demonstrated that he is dedicated leader who is results-driven. He has consistently shown himself to be intelligent, a good listener, humble, respectful. respectful of others and other cultures, research-based, data-driven and honest. He is a change agent who genuinely cares about the welfare of our community. Richard Clumpus, you will be greatly missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Other items from the floor? All right, seeing none at this point. Hopefully, that's enough time for folks to find the hand raising and/or to turn your camera on. So at this point, we will move on to our consent agenda. Consent, all matters on the consent agenda are considered routine by the city council and enacted in one motion. No separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is requested by any council member, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. A single opportunity for public comment on the consent agenda is available. So at this point, do any councillors wish to remove any of the items from the consent calendar? All right, seeing none. Any public comment on our consent agenda? All right, bringing it back to the councils, can we have a motion to act on the consent?
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
First by Grover, second by West. Gabe, again, if you don't mind doing a roll call vote, appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Roll call vote, starting with councilmember Clumpus.
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davies?
Yes.
Who am I missing? Grover?
Yes.
And Mayor Ladwig?
Yes.
Passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. At this point, we will move on. Item number one from our discussion action agenda is already taken care of with our virtual meeting, so we'll move on to the largest item from this evening. Discussion decision regarding city water supply, including presentations from Pacific Watershed Associates regarding Lufenholz Creek watershed availability and from City Engineer GHD regarding Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District Water Main Extension Preliminary Evaluation. So at this point, Eli, I don't know if you've asked either GHD or PWA to go first, but which direction shall we go first?
Okay. Well, initially, I was just thinking of going with GHD first simply because we had approved their contract first and then at a following meeting, we approved the Pacific Watershed. So I was doing them in that order.
Fabulous. So just for everyone's sort of procedural awareness, tonight we'll have a presentation from GHD followed by question and answer. Then we'll have a presentation by Pacific Watershed, again, followed by question and answer. Then we will open it up for the larger discussion. So, and I will ask that folks be aware of the three-minute time limit for comments just because we have almost 50 people on the meeting and we want to make sure everybody has time. So at this point, Steve Allen, Mr. Allen, are you on? And can you begin your presentation? Did I catch you off guard, Steve?
No, I was having trouble with my mute button there, sorry.
Okay.
I will prefer to keep my video off just to conserve available internet bandwidth. And I don't have a PowerPoint presentation to share, so it will be a verbal presentation and I'll try to keep it brief and happy to answer any questions. I'm essentially going over a memo that was put in the council packet. So I assume the council and others have had a chance to look at that, but I will briefly verbally summarize that. And then, like I say, happy to answer any questions. We're following up on the city council requests under August 10th meeting for city staff to gather more information about basically three items. One was the likely time to completion for when water could be delivered to the city from Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District Main Line Extension. Two is the potential cost for participating in the water line extension. And three was other contractual considerations for the city participation in that project. So Eli has asked GHD to gather information to assist with that request. And now we're going to summarize the information that we found. So the Humboldt Bay Water Line System is based on a fairly robust water supply from Ruth Lake, which I believe everyone knows. And moving forward, it's expected to be less affected by climate change than small coastal watersheds in general. The Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District System was designed to supply municipal customers around Humboldt Bay as well as to industrial pulp mills, which used to be on the peninsula and since shut down. So currently Humboldt Bay has excess water supply capacity. The pipeline is being considered after a request by the Trinidad Rancheria and is currently envisioned to go from Clam Beach up along Highway 101 that are yet to be identified. Excuse me, identified final location, but essentially following 101 up near to the Trinidad Rancheria. And so we were asked to look at what options and what it might look like if Trinidad were to join that extension project and basically utilize the same corridor, the same extension, but there would essentially be a T in the line. And there'd be a, you know, likely a meter in a line going to Trinidad Rancheria and likewise one to City of Trinidad if the city wanted to participate in that. It's how we looked at this project was, one, we didn't have a lot of time to look at it in a lot of detail. There's been a fair amount of look at this project or potential project in the past. And so we were looking at it from a fairly simplistic methodology. One part of that was to actually look at the hydraulics and try to confirm whether or not if we added the city's daily average needs to what the Rancheria was looking at, whether or not the same pipeline had been identified would serve both entities or whether perhaps a larger pipeline would be necessary. And the hydraulic analysis, without a lot of surprise for anyone, showed that the six-inch line would likely work to deliver water to both entities based on their demands. What that essentially means is the pump would run longer, you know, take longer to fill all the respective tanks in both entities and it would just the Rancheria. But that could be done. And one of the parameters for that was that it, you know, wouldn't take 24 hours to run. The district, Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District, referred to as the district, does not allow pumping during peak hours, which is when PGN costs are more expensive. That's typically between 4:00 and 9:00 p.m. But there's plenty of time that appeared available for that, for both entities to be served by one pipeline, essentially the same size. Currently, that's envisioned as a six-inch. That's not to say from our perspective that an eight-inch might be more economical. You know, the change in pipe size from one to the other from a construction cost is probably pretty minimal. And during final design, it may be a more efficient, cost-effective manner in order to pump water up. But adding the city to the existing extension to the Rancheria would not necessitate a larger water line. That's the important outcome of that. Another aspect that we looked at was, you know, there's a question about where and how the system would connect if there was a water line extension. And so from essentially the city's current water supply, treatment, storage and distribution systems would basically continue as they are without much modification. I mean, it's possible that you could run a new line directly to the water tanks and simply put it in as a redundant system to add additional water source to the water tanks. We looked at it as, that's how we analyze it hydraulically. That's kind of the worst-case scenario. That's the furthest distance and also the most elevation change. There's also options to tie into the city's water supply sooner. That would be more cost-effective. And that's basically how the water is getting up to the tank at this point. So likely you could tie in somewhere near the plant or between the plant and the tanks. So we did not assume that there was any changes necessary to the water system. And I believe that really is how it could be implemented if desired. That would also add a lot of resiliency. Basically, the city's water plant, water supply, storage, distribution system could all be run as they are now. And we would also recommend that, you know, improvements continue to be looked at and system maintained. It was mentioned earlier that there was a grant submitted recently in order to improve and enlarge the storage facilities, city's water tanks, and also replace a lot of the water lines that are causing leakage. So projects like that would still make sense to proceed either way. Regarding the timeline, there's a lot of aspects about the project, of course, that are not yet determined. But based on current knowledge and estimate of five to 10 years, seemed pretty reasonable based on discussions with the district and also the Rancheria. A lot of that is permitting and things that are more out of, you know, anyone's control regarding how long that may take. Trinidad Rancheria currently is planning to take the lead on the project based on their discussions with the district. And they have also implemented many other, you know, fairly large projects such as the pier and have a pretty good track record of delivering. So I think there's a strong desire by the Rancheria and the district to have a completion time closer to the five years. That could be three years, could be five years, could be eight years, could be 10 years. It's hard to say, but it's, I think it's safe to say that it wouldn't happen before three years. And the five-year might be a more reasonable assumption for when that could actually be in place. Regarding the cost, potential cost, that's also difficult to put a hard number to. And I'll explain why that is. For one, the project is not yet fully defined. There are multiple entities involved, so if the city were to join in the project, essentially they'd be joining with the Rancheria to help deliver that project. Both entities, being the city and the Rancheria, would be looking for grant funds. My understanding is the Rancheria is already looking for grant funds and have some grants secured to help start moving the design forward and there'd be other grants likely from multiple sources in order to help out with construction and other aspects of the project. City also has access to a lot of grants, some of which could be the same. Perhaps there's others that the Rancheria may have access to that the city wouldn't. So if you have a project that's not yet defined, hasn't really been designed or a full cost estimate made and you have multiple entities, everyone is looking for grant funds, it's really hard to say what the actual cost would be to the city. It's a reasonable assumption that based on just the current timing of where we are, there are a lot of grants available for assisting entities with water resistance, sorry, water resiliency and water redundancy. And that was one of those example grants is what we just applied for funds to help replace the tank, add more storage and then also replace a lot of the lines. And those grant funds haven't always been in place. So it's kind of a good timing as far as that goes, as far as availability of grant funds. But exactly who will pay for what is still up in the air. The city, of course, does have good, strong reserves that can be used to help leverage grant funding used for matches, et cetera. And the city's portion would obviously only be a portion of the project if they were in partnership, bringing the line up. And then it would also be reduced by the amount of grant funding available. So there's certainly the potential for the cost for the bring water up to the city that can be a very small portion of the total project cost. And I will just point out that, you know, compared to past studies that we're looking at the city potentially bringing up water on their own when there wasn't as many grant opportunities to support such a project, there is a big difference on old estimates for what it would cost the city compared to likely what would now be a much lower cost. Talked a little bit about the hydraulic evaluation of the water main size already and kind of our somewhat simplistic approach at the feasibility study, just in order to meet these timelines and get the basic information to council. There's more information in a memo of desire, but I don't really feel a need to go over that verbally at this point. Contractually, that was the third option, was contractual considerations. The Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District Board of Directors has a meeting in two days on October 14th. And on the agenda is a draft extension agreement with the Trinidad Rancheria. As everyone, I think, knows that they've been discussing that with the district since earlier this year. And so that's not going to change, you know, depending on the outcome of the council's decision tonight. If the city did choose to join the project, then that current contract between the district and Rancheria would still proceed. But the city could and should go to the board meeting on the 14th if they decided tonight to participate in a project to request participation. And the district board may choose then to allow that to proceed. That would likely result in amendment to bring the city into the agreement with the district. And the general scenario of how this works is that the the district is agreeing to supply water to the Rancheria right now. And they're getting an agreement in place to kind of formalize it, understanding the agreement, who's doing what. In general, the Rancheria would be responsible for raising funds, designing, permitting and constructing the water line main up to the desired location. So the district would be involved in during the design, making sure it meets AWWA standards. They would, you know, have access to inspection when the line is being built. And once it's actually built and in place and tested, then the district would basically be deeded the infrastructure and would actually own that infrastructure. So the Rancheria would be setting it up, getting it designed, getting it built, hand that over to the district and they have, then switched to a service agreement to supply water. And so the district, just like their other infrastructure, would own that infrastructure and they would have and they would own and maintain that in order to deliver water per the service agreement. So there's no outside maintenance fees or other fees. That's all wrapped up within the service agreement to deliver water. And this is essentially the same as all the other municipalities around Humboldt Bay. There is a similar contractual agreement that occurred once when Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District extended a water line from, I'm sorry, to the communities of Fieldbrook and Blue Lake. It was a somewhat similar situation, although many years ago, where there was a shared line that went to one entity and then it continued on to the other entity and they developed a cost share. And that was all fairly, fairly easy to work out and seemed to work well for those two entities. So there is a track record of this happening before. It's not something that's brand new. Reviewing my notes here, one moment. So in summary, the Humboldt Bay Municipal Board of Directors will consider the draft Main Line Extension Agreement with the Rancheria at their meeting in two days on October 14th. And if the city did choose to desire to join that project, then they should also attend that meeting and make that request for the board to consider. And all right, going through my notes here. So I think one thing that we can generally all agree on is future water shortages are certainly a possibility that the city should plan for. And the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District Extension is considered augmenting the city's water supply. Wouldn't change substantial changes to the city's current water supply and treatment system. That approach would add resiliency and redundancy to the city's water system, providing an additional reliable source of water that could be used separately or in tandem to provide water for Trinidad's customers. And there's two really key periods when that happens. One is during wet periods when the background turbidity is high. And then dry periods like we're experiencing now, typically in the late summer, when Lufenholz Creek may be very low and based on water rights and required bypass flows that there's, there could be insufficient water to draw from. It's certainly possible that Humboldt Bay water could be used on its own. That's not what we're recommending and that's not what we were asked to consider. So again, we're looking at the city's existing system to be used in tandem with Humboldt Bay's system. There are some fees that would be involved with Humboldt Bay if there was no water used at all. So basically a standby fee, they're still maintaining the infrastructure and, you know, ready to supply water when the city needs water. So on a very limited use, there would have to be that cost agreement worked out for standby charges and also for what the water supply would be. But that's something that could be, could be worked out if desired. We also spoke with Barry Sutter. He's the Climate District Engineer with the Division of Drinking Water, the State Water Resources Control Board. We were talking to him about the treatment plan in general and with Ryan giving his notice and some specifics about the plant. We also asked him then about, and I believe he had already heard about the potential for the city to be considering a the city to be considering to hook up to Humboldt Bay. And he noted that they likely would support such a connection. Personally, I don't think that's always been the case over the last several decades. But he mentioned that basically the board is really supporting projects that add water resiliency and redundancy to existing water systems, and that includes interconnections. He also noted when we were talking more about Ryan's and the plant, because the plant is currently a tier three, and so Ryan has a T3 license. And that can be a challenge. There's a numeric rating system that the board goes through to determine what tier a plant is in. And avoiding most of the technical issues, one of those are turbidity. And so if you're dealing with high turbidity, which the city sometimes does in the winter, then that adds the number of points. And the city is not too far over the threshold to go from a tier two to a tier three. And so one of the items that we're noting was potentially by augmenting water from Humboldt Bay, if that was to occur. Then during times when there's high turbidity in the creek, rather than trying to treat and distribute that water, then it's could also be possible to augment water from Humboldt Bay during those times and not deal with that high turbidity. And likewise, of course, in late summer, if there was a lack of water, then again, that's the water could be augmented from Humboldt Bay. And of course, looking at cost, you know, just want to point out probably the obvious that even if the desire was not to make any connection with Humboldt Bay Water District at this time, there likely is still costs for the city to deal with potential water shortages. And as far as GHD is concerned, we're not, we were asked to look into the connection with Humboldt Bay. We do believe it is a is an option that's probably never going to be a better time to connect. And there's probably never been a greater need to connect. And so we certainly think that it's smart to consider connection to Humboldt Bay. That's not to say that we don't support other options such as what Pacific Water Associates is going to be talking about. Ideas such Mr. Merdrone has floated out in the past. Projects even as including, you know, the recent grant that are trying to add more storage tank volume and improving the distribution system. So from a redundancy and resiliency from a time of water shortage, we basically support investigating both options and don't really believe that it has to be a one or the other. You know, there's potential for shortages. So it seemed like having all options on the table would be would be a good, good option move forward with. And with that, I'll stop and see if there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I just have a quick question just from my own understanding. The the discussion in your write-up about the six inch versus an eight inch. If I'm understanding it correctly, the eight inch is a a consideration for a pipe that reduces friction, basically a more a way to increase the efficiency of the system, thus reducing costs on pumping and whatnot. Is that a fair assessment?
I think that's a fair assessment, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that component correctly. So let's start with the council and then I'm going to open it up to the general public for questions for Steve's presentation. Dave?
Yeah, yeah, thanks a lot. That was a very informative presentation. Now, I wonder during times of augmentation, is that considered a time of groundwater recharge as well? Because because you are relieving it in those high turbidity times, it's actually helping the help of the surface water. I only say that because I've been spending a lot of time in the and I'm considering the surface water as part of a pristine environmental ecosystem at this point. So I just wondered, is that considered groundwater recharge during augmentation time?
Um, I think it could be considered that. I think I would, I think the PWA presentation might be might be helpful, looking at kind of the overall storage and use on that. But I, yes, if you if you were not drawing out any water through the infiltration gallery, I think you would, you would be helping out the groundwater situation, although it's very low in the watershed.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the council for Mr. Allen? Tom?
Yeah, thanks, Steve. I was curious as, you know, there are obviously costs involved with building this. What is the procedure for rolling those costs over to ratepayers in the future when the when the project is complete?
Yeah, thanks, Tom. That's a good question, and I didn't address it in my verbal summary. There are different options in talking with Mr. Friedenbach from the district. He mentioned that the district is very upfront and transparent with their municipal customers. So of course, there's, you know, cities of Eureka, Arcata, other examples. And they they look at five-year projections. And they basically share that information with the cities. And the cities often roll basically that cost onto their ratepayers. And so they incorporate that cost basically into their their costs that they pass on to the ratepayers. And doing a five-year planning basically helps with the like the Prop 218 public process that when you're redoing your rate increases that you you need to take that into account. So essentially, the cost, a lot of the cost would likely be covered by grants. That's the the working assumption and how that will pan out will will, time will tell. But once a service agreement was hooked up and the process was working, then the district would provide five-year projections. And typically municipalities do pass that on to the rate customers, if that answers your question.
Yeah, that's, I saw that in your in your report and that confirms what you wrote. The other question I have is, and you may not have an answer for this because I did not see it in the report, but there's actually no estimate as to how much this would end up being rolled over under ratepayers. We have a fairly small amount of ratepayers that would be shouldering the burden of this in my estimation. So I'm kind of looking for estimates, but I I'm not sure they're out there.
Yeah, it's a, that's a very good question. And you're right that there really is not a good answer at this point. We can say that it's appears like there's never a better time or a cheaper time. But that doesn't really get down to specifically what that might be to a ratepayer. And so I think a lot of that really depends on what the how much of the project are paid for by grants. I think, I think the the rates that other municipalities pay are fairly fairly affordable. It's not like the other municipal areas around are paying a lot higher water bill for their district supplied water. So I think it would be competitive, but how much that would actually translate to a ratepayer, we really don't know at this point.
Thank you.
Mr. Columbus?
Yes, I I noticed because of state drought opportunities for funding and also federal that this is probably a very good time for any small city to embark on infrastructure for water. Especially if the California Water Boards approves of this type of effort. And I know that there's been some discussion and hopefully there will be later about whether this is something that the city should do or should the city just wait, let the ranch area build it? And then if we do run into problems and it's already done, then we can simply hook up to it. Well, I I went to the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District's packet because they have a meeting on the 14th. Two hundred and twenty-eight pages bigger than our packet, but in it was a description that said that should the city, meaning Trinidad, decide to hook up later, let's say we waited five years or 10 years and said, okay, we like to have water. At that point, the ranch area would have paid for all of this. And because of that, according to this document on Humboldt Bay's website, the city will be charged a minimum of 50% of all costs for the mainline extension, including design, permitting, construction costs and interest. And the monies will be paid actually to the ranch area rather than Humboldt Bay because the ranch area paid for the pipeline. So I wanted to get your opinion as to whether a municipality at this particular point in time should wait and try to get funds later if they're available, or is this a better time to go down the road of building infrastructure for a small city?
That's another good question. I can give you my my brief impression of that and others may have more more to share, but it's our opinion that there's never going to be a better time to bring Humboldt Bay water to the city if that's the desire. There is just the timing of having another entity being the ranch area that's that is going to bring water up between the grant opportunities that are currently available to participate in a project. There's, I don't think there's ever going to be a cheaper option for the city. Both the district and the ranch area have expressed their openness to include the city at the project at this stage, which we, as we put in our report, would likely make it more cost effective for all parties to provide the city with additional reliable water supply. We also noted that if the city decided not to participate in a project and in your scenario, Mr. Columbus, you know, wait five years or whatever period of time and then go back and ask later that one, there's no guarantee that they would be able to receive water. And there's also, we said it would be considerably more expensive and we didn't go into a lot of detail because we don't have a lot of, we weren't doing an economic analysis of it, but your 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 point is valid. And I guess I would add to that, that I wasn't aware of that specific agreement in the packet. I hadn't looked at that. But the city would likely, I I'm not certain if there would be any grants available to, you know, try to support that. Whereas if the city were to participate in the project during design and construction, there likely would be grants. So the that's why we trying to convey that I I don't think there's ever cheaper time to participate in a project. And waiting is not a guarantee to get water and it certainly would be more expensive, but what is cheaper and what is expensive? What's the magnitude of that? What would that mean for ratepayers? We don't have that kind of detail at this time.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments from the council before we open it up to the public? Tom?
I have one more. So it's quite a project in this area. So if this project were to go through, let's say with city's cooperation with the ranch area, is GHD likely the engineer for the entire project?
I would say unlikely. I don't know. That hasn't been discussed, but the ranch area is already progressing with the project. I would assume that they already have someone either lined up or, you know, if they didn't, I I'm, I do not think that GHD would be the engineer record for that work.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? All right, let's open this up to the general public and Richard, if you don't mind, just so I can keep track. Thank you very much. And I also ask that folks identify, so these are questions for the information that Steve just presented from GHD and at least initially, if you don't mind, please indicating your name and whether or not you're a Trinidad water customer. That is a request that's been made of me for folks to provide that information. So please consider providing your name and if you're a water customer of Trinidad currently. And at this point, oh, I see.
Before you start.
Yep.
So I see what you're trying to to segment this out to certain sections. I understand that and sounds like a good plan. I would also like to propose that we hear all of the presentation, then public comment, because I've seen what happens in the past as we get into a complete back and forth conversation with the public and it starts to become unclear. So I don't know if anyone else has that desire, but that would be my desire.
You know, Tom, that's a great, I think that's a great perspective. But thank you for sharing that. Other thoughts on that? If we hear from PWA next, and then we'll begin the the question comment period. I see a head nodding from Mr. West. Mr. Grover. And Mr. Columbus. All right. Thank you for that. At this point, let's move over to Representative for Pacific Watershed Associates, Mr. Kramer. I believe you were on the line. I've got three screens worth of people. So let me see.
Yeah, I'm here and happy to begin starting to share my screen now.
Thank you.
Okay, so you're all seeing the PDF that says overview of Leavenhold Creek Water Resources and Availability? Is that true?
Yes.
Good. And everyone can hear me, obviously. So on this slide is a photo of the Leavenhold Creek looking downstream from the point of diversion at West Haven Drive where it goes through the Box Culvert. My name's Todd Kramer. I've been working with Pacific Watershed Associates for the last two decades as a watershed scientist, hydrologist and erosion control specialist, working in watersheds to provide science-based solutions to watershed restoration and habitat enhancement. The broad purpose of our evaluation is to better understand the role of groundwater reservoir in the hydrologic cycle and to estimate groundwater factors with greater accuracy than mere expression of concept. The goals are to provide watershed assessment information so the Trinidad City Council can make an informed decision about the supply and availability of water for domestic use in a Leavenhold Creek watershed. On the next slide is our general outline of today's presentation. We'll cover the water budget, local geology, hydrology and use data compiled from previous studies, citizen scientists and technical memorandums to speak about the future of water resources in the Leavenhold Creek watershed. And so here I have a typical elements of a water budget displayed for everyone's understanding. It all comes in as precipitation. Importantly, we need to understand the quality, timing and quantity of flows as well as the water levels and storage required to sustain aquatic ecosystems and human livelihoods that depend on this watershed. PWA is going to use a water budget approach to this water availability analysis. Just looking at the Leavenhold Creek watershed, the primary building blocks of the water budget are precip stream flow, evapotranspiration, water use and change in groundwater storage. The concept of the long-term sustainable use is the basis of this overview. It goes beyond just understanding surface flows and precipitation rates and includes the understanding of various other water levels and other aquatic ecosystems such as springs, wetlands and the aquifer. Now I'm going to stop sharing my screen and Danny Higgins will take away the next set of slides.
Mr. Higgins, do we have you on the, I see your name on the screen. Are you able to join us?
Yeah, I'm I'm here. I'm just trying to get organized here. So sorry about that delay. Mouse was acting up. And Okay, is this visible all?
Yes, sir.
All right. Sorry for the delays. Okay. Yeah, this this limited study, we're really going to do our best here to begin to shed some light on the nature of your aquifer, which is different than many around the country. It's kind of unique to these coastal settings and 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 the paper that recently was published that I've got up on the screen is published in June of 2019 and it reflects geologic studies that have been performed by Humboldt State University and professors near and far and US geologic surveys and lots of people that come to the North Coast to study our unique geology because we're we're on the edge of a plate margin, you know, separating North American continent from from the Pacific Plate. We've got very active earthquake activity and subduction and therefore we get uplift that's giving us the landforms that we're seeing around us. And you do have a unique aquifer and I'm going to try And you do have a unique aquifer and I'm going to try to put some numbers on that, uh, but it's very, very preliminary numbers because we only have some adjacent studies that we can rely upon where people have estimated the depths of marine terrace deposits uh unconsolidated alluvium, uh, that's been uplifted from the marine environment and is now on land and it's always underlaid by bedrock. And all that's controlled by these faults and earthquakes and tectonics that dominate our landscape. So this is a reference paper that uh, a lot of really useful information that has been compiled, that's, that's really been collected over three, four decades on the North Coast. Um, Pageant, Kelsey are folks from Humboldt State and Dave Lampfirs, the GIS analyst at uh Green Diamond. And they were able to supply to us um one meter meter lidar, which is very detailed uh landform, you know, topography. And so um, so I'll be referencing a lot of the information that came out of this paper uh with some additional analysis and assumptions that we're making to uh come up with uh the, the first approximation you've probably ever heard of in, on what water might be available in the Love and Hold Creek uh watershed. So I'll go to the next slide. Um, so I'm going to zoom in on this map, but I just want you to show, I'll zoom in and I'll zoom back out. There's a lot of information on this map. But I want to be able to give you a good overview of what it involves and don't get bogged down with uh you know, all the child's colors here, but I, I just gonna point out and we'll zoom in and look at all this stuff in detail. So you better understand the watershed, but where the hand is on the screen, can you all see that?
We're still on the, the first um, at first page with the abstract and the intro.
You are.
Looks like number four of your 19 slides. You must have two monitors, Danny.
I do.
Yeah, you're uh still showing us the other one, I think.
So you, you weren't looking at this page?
We're seeing upper plate deformation, late plase scheme, blah, blah, blah.
Yep, yeah, yeah. No. You're not seeing the map?
Nope.
Okay.
Sometimes I stop sharing and start sharing again and that tends to kick it back to where, where you want it.
I was just gonna say that sometimes it's gonna. I can screenshot what was in the package if you like.
There we go. There we go.
Well, I, I really want to point some things out. So that, that might be better if I can do this. And
Just before you stopped sharing, we saw the, the page you wanted us to see. So you're getting close.
Yep.
There we go.
All right, that's visible?
Yep.
All right. So I'll just back up here. Uh, I don't understand. Hang on. This is not good. You know what's going on?
Todd, would it be possible for you to drive? You seem to um have better uh access to the PowerPoint and then Danny could give you direction? Would that work?
Well, it, it, yeah, let, give me, yeah, he can try that, but I'd prefer if I can figure this damn thing out.
In the map again now. If necessary, I could try to share it from my screen and work it with you.
Yeah, please do.
So, okay.
Yeah.
Hey, uh, Richard, excuse me, just Mr. Chair, um, I would like to uh do that for Danny. I can do that.
Yeah, that'd be great, Todd.
Okay, no problem.
You have Todd? There you go. Okay. Sorry about that, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, so anyway, this is a very much zoomed out view. Um, and you're not seeing my air, or are you? You're seeing, are you seeing any cursor?
Nope.
Okay. Todd, show the boundary. And it's this, it's blue dash line that's right in here. I'll zoom, zoom in, Todd, do about uh uh fifty percent. Yeah, no, yeah, I, I need this, so. Uh, that's good. So you can see the uh, the blue dash line, the prominent blue lash line that sits in circling the watershed boundary. Um, down in the very lower left-hand corner, uh, below where it says Trinidad intake, you can see where Love and Holt flows into the ocean. Um, and there's a flight of five marine terraces present along the shoreline as a result of uplift and sea level changes over time. And so the red in the very bottom left is T1 and that's uh the youngest terrace. And as you can see, essentially none of that is in the West Haven, the, the, the Trinidad watershed above the Trinidad insect intake where it's shown with a label, Todd. And uh, so below the intake, you can see the curvy yellow line. That is West Haven Drive just downstream from the intake and you can see Highway 101 further to the west. Um, so what I want to point out is um, the primarily in the Love and Hold Creek watershed, you've got very little of this blue marine terrace. That's, there's just a tiny little bit of it in the uh, just above where it says Trinidad intake. Okay, right there, tiny little bit inside the blue line. Um, as we go upstream from the intake, you can see there's a larger percentage of the green marine terrace, which is a little bit older. These are flat-lined surfaces that have a certain thickness of alluvium. Uh, former beach deposits that are, that have been uplifted and that are now present in the watershed and these are all pieces of your aquifer. As we go further upstream where the watershed really branches out, you see a huge expanse of the orange color and that's the T4 terrace. That terrace is in the range of uh uh, a hundred and fifty thousand years old. Um, the green terrace is about a hundred and twenty-five thousand years old. So these are old uplifted beaches um, that have bedrock underneath them. It's fractured Franciscan bedrock. Um, it has a topography underneath it that's very similar to what you see on the modern coats nowadays. There's sea stacks galore that have been buried around uh with sand um, that are protruding up through the underlying bedrock. Um, and then, and then what I want to point out, Todd, is uh just a little to right where your hand is, there's a orange dashed yellow line right there. Trace that for them. That is uh a zone, that, that is what's called a, a former shoreline. So that would be what is reminiscent of the modern beach when you go walk on the beach that separates the ocean from the, the bluffs that are, that, that are exposed um uh, uh, below uh Coastal Drive and uh and there's another one there separating the T4 pair terrace from the T5 terrace, which is the oldest remnants of marine uplifted terraces in the watershed. So um zoom in just a little tiny bit more, Todd. Um, and uh center it from the water take, water take intake going up. That's perfect. So you can see that um in the headwaters to the very right on the watershed, you have a, a very extensive braided dendritic drainage pattern of, of steeper channels with very little uh alluvial deposits. Um, and as you work down and we collect that water, you can see that as it flows down just upstream from the Trinidad intake and where Todd's hand is, that's a very deeply incised area and that's, that's bedrock that's not colored. Um, and both on where it shows old wagon wheel in the green on the bottom of the photo as well to the north where Fox Farm Road is shown. Uh, you, we're, we're showing where the private parcels are in the watershed. So in both those areas, the private parcels are shown by the black land parcels. Okay, and we've done our best using our photo interp to predict uh which parcels have visible homes on them. Okay, and they're shown by those little houses. And then the red dots are locations in the watershed that we have been able to analyze uh well logs um that have been filed with the Division of Water Rights with the State of California. So we've mapped where we know known wells are. Now, those are as a result of drillers pulling a permit from the county. Some of them go back to the sixties. Um, and some are as recent as a few years ago as people have been searching for water. Um, and those records are okay. They're, they, they can be pretty poor because drillers don't describe underlying stratigraphy or the sediment structure like geologists do. Um, but nonetheless, this is a minimum number and we do show then there's like where it says T3 by Old Wagon Wheel Road, there's that blue turquoise uh box. And those are areas where T3 Todd uh off Old Wagon Road. There's uh, tho- those are, those are the well records of the blue box there with a black dot in the middle of it. Those are areas where landowners have filed with the Division of Water Rights their, their annual use of water from springs. These aren't streams. They're from springs that are emerging on these marine terraces for the most part. Only in the upper watershed are a few of those blue dots up on uh on uh Green Diamond property are they kind of on stream. Um, so this kind of gives you an overview of the property of the watershed where your, your aquifer exists. So let's zoom back out to about twenty-five percent, Todd. And, and again, you can see that um inside the blue line that shows the watershed, you can see that a significant portion of the watershed is underlaid by these, these marine unconsolidated piles of sediment and they have varying depths and so the next slide I want to get at is trying to show you some, based on the literature, what, what the approximate depths of the, of this material can be because that technically is the vast majority of your aquifer. Next slide, please. Great. So um, this is the transect that's been placed through the watershed. Um, that kind of gives you a nice cross section of the watershed from the watershed divide, which is three miles upstream from Highway 101 and and uh where your intake is. Um, and uh, there's a terrace two again, and there's terrace three in green, terrace four in the goldish orange and then terrace five, the oldest one. And so going back to geologic data, marine terrace surface classification of cover rock that was published in recently in Kelsey, Pageant, Lampfier. These are measured depths on other marine depar- terrace deposits in, north of us. So the most re- closest areas in Crescent City where there's a lot of marine terraces that have been uplifted. And the other three locations are in Southern Oregon. Um, uh, where a lot of coastal studies have been done, the same thing to do this paleoseismus, they better understand the tectonic and earthquake recurrence history along the coast. But so from that literature and it's, it's published in that paper for terrace two, which is aged at a hundred and five thousand years old. So that's a lot of years that, that thing's been sitting there up out of, out, out of the ocean environment. Um, minimum depths on that one hundred and five thousand year old terrace, plus or minus are uh twenty-five to sixty feet, a minimum and a max. And we've shown that with the dash lines. Uh, on terrace three, the hundred and twenty-five thousand year old terrace, minimum depths uh from the literature, uh nearby literature are twenty-five feet to sixty-six feet deep. And then on terrace four, the two hundred thousand year old terrace, uh, the depths are deeper. It was a longer uh, uh, inner, inner period of uh sea level uh between earthquakes and and that, that surface is two hundred thousand years old and the minimum depths from the literature thirty-nine to seventy-five feet. And terrace five, which is very old, probably on the order of somewhat less than five hundred thousand years old. We don't have depth value on that. So we applied the minimum depths uh as the same as terrace four. Um, where we have a lot better data. And on this graph, I just want to show you that there's paleo shorelines and platform inner edges that are identified. And that's what the topography and the subsurface looks like. And think of these platform inner edges is the same as your modern beach. If you go out on the beach anywhere between Trinidad and, and uh Little River, you're on a platform inner edge, right where the waves beat against the bluffs. Um, and there's a pile of sand out there with sea stacks up in it, coming, it coming through, some submerged as y'all, the fishermen know. Um, and then there is a slope there and you have a very steep slope that's unstable just below Coastal Drive. Well, each of these surfaces are these old paleo beaches that have been uplifted. So all the water that could be in this alluvium is really in a gravitational flow. Okay, it's because there's slope toward the west. There's a fall in elevation as you go west, as you can see on the, on the left axis there. So, and then we were able to analyze that the well data that's published, you know, available with the state. And we've shown all the wells that say they go to bedrock. Okay, again, you gotta take driller records with a grain of salt because we all know that the underlying bedrock is what we call this Franciscan melange that produces all these big knockers of, of hard rock that, which make the sea stacks that we see. And you can all go onto these marine terraces also in Love and Holtz and elsewhere inland from Trinidad and you see big, big chunks of uh harder rocks sticking up through the terrace deposit. So trying to give you the picture that the drill wells, a lot more work needs to be done on that in refining this estimate, but I'm trying to give you some idea of what size reservoir do you have or potentially have? And we don't. And we don't know what that is today, but we know it varies with time based on all the things that has everyone concerned with, rainfall, runoff, all alike. But, um, and, and so the fact that all these wells say that's the depth that they reached bedrock, even though our minimum depth, the maximum depth numbers are these much shorter numbers for the most part, shallower numbers, just says that we're dealing with an irregular topography underneath us. So, all this is leading up to kind of give you some kind of estimate of, of what, what your available water could be. Next slide, please. So, um, this, there's a lot of numbers here, but that's the way this kind of analysis is. I just want you all to have an understanding of how it was derived. I'm really going to focus on the colored numbers. Okay? So, this is the marine terrace watershed areas and how we're determining water volume estimates for Luffenhold Creek watershed upstream of the Trinidad diversion intake. So, again, on the upper, upper table, we've got the whole of the Luffenhold Creek watershed above the intake. It's four point seven square miles. Okay? Or three thousand thirty-eight acres. So, that's a hundred percent of the watershed above the intake. So, we've come up with those areas that you saw on the map. It makes up the plan view in basically, uh, square miles of those flat surfaces that are covered with the alluvium. So, remember we said marine terrace two, hardly any was in the watershed above the intake. So, it makes up just point one percent of the alluvial cover. Marine terrace three, the green was a little more extensive, but it's confined to most of those areas in the, where, in the low, very lower watershed above the intake where the channel's quite narrow, the watershed's quite narrow. But it still comprises about two point five percent. Marine terrace four, the big orange areas, they cover the bulk of your watershed area. Twenty-three percent, uh, by far the largest contributor to your aquifer. And marine terrace five, the purples that were in the very upper watershed, is a little over eight percent. So, I want to summarize that so that, so thirty-eight, almost thirty-four percent of your watershed is surface covered with alluvium of varying depths. Okay? And that combines to one point six one acre or square miles. So, but, so here's these minimum depths projected here, the same ones we went over that were shown on the cross section. And I've just averaged those as a minimum and a max. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. So, let's go, let's get going toward estimating of what we're talking about here. So, this next, next table has a minimum terrace alluvial volume and maximum. That's based on the average minimum depth and the average maximum depth. And so, you can see these are billions of cubic feet. But I've converted them in the green to acre feet. So, you better understand what the potential, what, what the acreage is of the volume of the alluvium. It has water in it, but it's not rim full. And it's mostly sediment. And that water can move through it at some limited capacity based on a whole lot of things. But you can see that from thirty-nine thousand to seventy-six thousand might be the acre feet of alluvium. And I would just, I'm adding in the blue there just so you can think about your aquifer in terms of what, where you want to go down the line. This is sediment and green is the sediment pile. Okay? It has a volume of alluvium. But Ruth Reservoir's storage volume full of water is forty-two thousand acre feet. So, even if you take our minimum terrace alluvial volume based on the varied well depths that we showed in the cross sections, it's not a flat surface underneath like we draw it in the cartoon. It, it's got variability, but you're very close to an acre footage of alluvium that can hold water, but you're not going to, it's not full of water. So, I'll just, I'm going to go on then to the calculations here. Okay? So, the way we look at available water, the water that you can pump and use or draw at a diversion is really called specific yield. And that water is water that's held in this big sand pile, gravel pile, uh, silt pile that's available to be released by gravity. And usually the specific yield that are in this, if twenty percent is alluvium volume is water or if ten percent, that specific yield is, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a reflection of the porosity of the material. So, the permeability of that, that sand pile that's, that's unconsolidated. And, uh, and the, the, these, these numbers on specific yield, I'm deriving from US Geologic and California Department of Water Resource publication that, that specifically deals with specific yields, compilation of specific yields from various materials. And so, it's really looking at the hydrologic properties of various earth materials. In this case, we're looking at the alluvium. There's probably some water coming from the underlying bedrock, but we don't know what that is. There's very little information. But specific yield is, uh, is the water that's available and then it's versus the water that you guess can't get out of the gravel pile. You can't get it out of the alluvium. And that's called the, the retained yield. And so, specific yield with the retained yield is the water that's held in capillary action or that it's glued to all those particles that's in the water. And even if you're pumping, that's why wells can be pumped dry, but they'll come back because there's a recharge. And so, this retained yield is, is, is stuff that we really can't get at. And the numbers for these kinds of unconsolidated marine deposits and alluvial deposits in coastal settings, all the numbers in the literature say it's probably at best the specific yields are ten to twenty percent. Okay? Of what's available in that alluvium. So, we've just put some numbers here as a minimum and max of what those would be in gallons. And then I personally, just understanding the region and, and, and the area and the controls on the specific yield in these old sediments, a hundred to several hundred to five hundred thousand years old, I'm much more inclined to go along with the ten percent of the calculated terrace alluvial volume is available water. And, and the things really controlling specific yield are a whole bunch of things. And, but in simple form, the grain size and, and, and then the stratigraphy, how complicated is the layering in those old beach deposits, in these old deposits that, uh, that, uh, is, 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 uh, it's, it's pretty chewed up in these marine environments. And then it's the compaction and that goes on when they're hundreds of thousands of years old and settlement over time. There's weathering of grains that go on. So, uh, you know, and then there's the depth of the water that's in the aquifer right now in any time because a thicker column of water will have more force to push water out via gravity and make for more productive springs than less productive springs. So, there's a lot of things that go into this. But this is kind of what we're at, is just trying to look at your first approximation of, and it is a very much a first approximation, of what kind of water can be in the aquifer. So, thank you, Todd.
Well, that was fantastic. Thank you, Danny, for going through that. That map is so incredible. I've been awing over it. And we brought a couple of copies in to Eli in the main office at the city of Trinidad, so people can come share and run their fingers over it and, and look at it, you know, blown up like a normal map on a desk and not up here on the screen. So, please do that if you have the time. So, next I'm going to talk about regional annual stream flow. And what I'm showing here in this slide is a monthly stream flow as a percent of annual flow. So, you're really looking at the hydrologic year here, starting at October first and ending September thirtieth. And on the Y axis, I, I show the percent of annual flow, that's runoff. Now, as you see here, June through November is, uh, June through October is less than five percent of the annual runoff. And that's what's really triggered my job here at PWA. They wanted us to go down and better understand the low flow string conditions at the water plant. And we did that. We brought our PWA telemeter, which is a spectrometer that takes water elevations and it's related to my stream flow measurements. And this is, uh, this is it at the plant. And here it is on a California aqueduct where it's, it's just less noisy and less flashy. So, now I'm going in to look at that data. And here's the 2020 real-time continuous data with rainfall plotted on this axis up here. And we've got stream flow from April through the middle of November. Over here, we have the bypass discharge in cubic feet per second. And over here, we have the, the rain amounts. And those are daily totals expressed in inches. Hydrologists, you know, typically like to split the water budget up into a surface water budget and groundwater budget. And you're, you're looking at both components here. And I've got it kind of separated here with this orange arrow. What I show here is short duration rainfalls and rain events that change stream flow, but then rapidly returns down, back down to groundwater yield. And one can see the prolonged groundwater depletion as you run across to the next rainfall. And on the next slide, we're going to zoom in to these areas pointed out in the orange arrows and get to talk about ground flow. So, here we go. This is the critical dry period. It's shown on the hydrograph with rainfall again. On the X axis, I show the time period beginning in late June and ending mid-November. And on the Y axis, the bypass discharge and precipitate inches top down here on the right. What I'm really going at is to show you that the city's water right permit stipulates that the city shall bypass point two five CFS when the natural flows in Luffenhold Creek are lower than point eight six CFS. Then the city must retain point one five CFS in the creek, including enough flow for downstream water users. And Danny expressed this well, this is the, the winter bypass flow and this is the summer bypass flow. So, when we get into below point eight six, um, you see, we live down there a lot throughout the, the summer, but never have gotten down to where we have to curtail drafting at the point of diversion. Next, I want to show you the decreasing thirty-year trend in annual precip as shown by this red dotted line. Now, this is some very cool data to me. And I don't even know if Don has done this, but this is Don Allen's data for thirty years that he's been taking as tipping butt rain gauge in West Haven. And you can see that we are drying up. This is on a steady down curve. I don't think we're going to be able to bend this, this way soon. Now, we're going to go look at land use. And I've highlighted Luffenhold Creek here in yellow, the entire watershed. And you can see that the land is dominated by forest management, including harvests, road construction, quarries and ponds that are used for desk control and operations, as well as private landowners who get their water from wells, spring boxes, and some directly from the street. Uh, riparian users use their water on their parcels. And like the city, we have an a pertinent water right. We use it off-site. In our GIS, PWA used orthophotography and mapped the land cover across the watershed. We also used GIS and Google Earth 2019 satellite imagery and found fifty-one homes upslope of the point of diversion. USGS reports that US citizens use about eighty-two gallons of water a day. And we went ahead and tried to punch some numbers to look at use levels upstream. Now, we're going to go on to the overview during the critical dry periods. So, what I have up here, there's a table that shows continuous daily demand. So, the city is pumping forty-five thousand to ninety thousand gallons of water a day. Typically, it's sixty-eight thousand, uh, but when it's at high use, uh, they might ramp up to ninety thousand. That's sometimes in August, and that's shown on this table. This table is showing the hydrograph and stream levels when they are pumping. And the city has a water right to use that water. And it's more than double of what they actually are available to them. They normally pump at a rate of point one five CFS to point one nine CFS. So, Ryan, my partner there at the water plant, he is saying right now, today, he's pumping at point one five CFS. But just last week, he was at point one nine. So, he goes back and forth managing water based on use. Then CDF also has a regulatory demand. So, we're saying during the summer, it's point one five CFS. Here again, summertime, it's point one five CFS is our summer bypass flows, regulated bypass flows that need to be had. Now, we can reserve a little bit for downstream landowners. I added point one zero CFS because there are some riparian users downstream. And you don't want to upset your downstream neighbors. They might have a more primary water right than a pertinent users because they're riparian users. So, our continuous daily demand, just what is happening every day, but more expressed in the summertime, is a low rate of point four CFS and the high of point four four CFS. And that's shown in the red and the green line here. So, and we, as we stretch across this for 2021, this is 2021 data. We just downloaded it today. Um, all the way up here, we see going into ten twelve, big downdraft back down after our last rains. We're going back down to our base flows here with use. We're never getting into that where flows exceed demands. Oops, where demands exceed flows. Did I mess that one up? Sorry. Okay? So, then again, I want to zoom into August of this year. We looked at five days. This was requested by Ryan. He had been seeing these incredible downdraft draws in the water. And I wanted to plot that for the city on a hydrograph and did so. Um, and what you see is these big steps where water has just dropped in elevation and dropped in flow rate during the night. And we don't know why, but here they are. Here's normal, it's kind of going up and down. The city's using stuff, people are using it. There's a big one, big gap. I kind of look at the gap, you know, how many hours is this gap? Here's the clock, here's the times. This is the big one right here. Then we got two other smaller ones that kind of go back to normal. Surprisingly, Ryan and I didn't see too many of these after. And, but in 2020, we also did. And I'm to go search those out and try to find those when I have my free time. So, I want to go into kind of the bullet points of what we have identified and our findings as we ran through this study. Some of them are very obvious, but I just wanted to be clear on summary. And then some are actually stretching towards the conclusions here. So, number one, the aquifer that feeds Luffenhold Creek consists of geologic terrace deposits and gravel and sand, mostly in the upper watershed and fracture bedrock in the middle of lower watershed. The aquifer is a water bank that stores infiltrating water during the winter and slowly discharges stored groundwater to the creek during the summer. Three, rainfall records show that there has been a gradual decrease in the mean annual precip over the last thirty years. And this appears likely to continue. Less precipitation reduces natural emerging water because of hydrostatic pressure. If we're not filling up the water table and forcing that water out and pushing it out through the Franciscan or pushing it out through the marine terraces, we're going to have reduced water flows. Four, a critical dry period occurs each year from early August to mid-November. I showed that stream flow is the lowest and water demand is the highest in the summer. Five, land use in the Luffenhold Creek Five, land use in the Leffinholdt Creek watershed upstream of the city's intake consists of commercial forest management in the upper two thirds of the watershed and residential parcels and development in the lower one third. Six, stream flow data in August twenty twenty-one shows daily fluctuations attributed to natural water by vegetation as well as by withdrawals by the city and upstream landowners. Or these occasionally, uh, but significant drops in stream flow, uh, may be documented and have been documented at night. Seven, low stream flows in the critical dry period of summer twenty-one and summer twenty twenty approached, but did not fall below the discharge levels required by the city's permit requirements. That's very important. And then another important point is that total annual rainfall and stream flow in the Leffinholdt Creek watershed is significantly more than is needed to provide Trinidad with sustainable municipal supply of water. But winter rainfall and runoff will likely need to be stored for summer use during the critical dry period as climate continues to dry and water use continues to increase. Those are some big important points that we were able to drive out of getting our hydrologic and geologic data together. I want to make some recommendations and I'm sure Danny wants to chime in a little bit here too. Basically, um, our recommendations talk about a decrease in water loss and use and increasing water availability and conducting additional water resources planning and feasibility investigations. So to decrease the water loss and water use, we suggest you, we implement water conservation education measures. And we also perform the leak detection studies and implement repairs. To increase water availability, we should obtain and manage existing or additional water rights for increasing water storage and supplementing the critical dry period water supply. Identify suitable lands, purchase small properties or easements and construct small water reservoirs and/or municipal tank farms sufficient to accommodate the critical dry period water demand. And supplement the available Leffinholdt Creek water supplies during the summer period. Also to increase water availability, fill new storage reservoirs and water tanks from rainwater harvesting and stream flow diversions during the wet weather period for use during the critical dry period. Our recommendations for conducting additional water resources and planning and feasibility investigations to address water availability and use, we suggest revisiting, evaluating and utilizing past and present water resource studies and investigations to determine the technical, logistical and financial feasibility for implementing additional water conservation and water supplement measures. You need to work with the city water users on water conservation and water education measures to maximize efficiency and use in the water supplies. You need to upgrade the city's water distribution system and decrease system leakage. These are things that we all know. And we need to obtain lands for building adequate municipal water stores sufficient for providing critical dry period water supplies. And that is the end of our long list of recommendations. We have more. We just can only put so many out here on the PDF. Each of these has inner workings and a long road ahead. But I believe in this presentation, we are able to provide you with what's up slope as far as water resources and what's available at the point of diversion.
Thank you, Todd, uh, very much and Danny for your presentation. So for procedural reasons, I think I would like to first ask the council for, uh, if they have questions for either Todd or Steve or Danny regarding presentations that are information that they presented. Uh, and then we'll move into, uh, public comment. And I would like to, I just have a quick question for you, Todd. I believe I heard somewhere and I'm looking for the right language, but, um, you had mentioned in one of our conversations about, uh, work that you had done on the Matoll and there was some effort put into place and I think you mentioned or alluded to this about preventing water from being drawn during the dry period uh, for irrigation and filling those tanks in the winter time. Can, can you, is there? Is that a, is that a legal requirement? Is that a recommendation? Can you expand on that a little bit more, please?
Yeah, I think, um, landowners can only take ten percent of the stream flow and their flow up there stagnant. And they don't have the resource to be looking, uh, for another pipeline. So they've come on to themselves and to educate themselves and to buy tanks for those landowners in those what they call losing reaches. So they went and studied the wa- upper watershed and they found, uh, winning reaches. Those are, that are attached to the groundwater and then losing reaches, those are that, you know, kind of go dry af- quickly after it rains. So they went to those tank holders and supplied them with twenty-five thousand, fifty-five thousand gallon tanks. And they're self-collecting tanks. They self-collect rain. Uh, they might draft out in the winter. That's what we're suggesting here. Um, and they really did help out the landowners. They almost bought them for them, went through the arc clearance and got them on these properties. There's not that many up there and they have these huge properties. Big flats, big valleys, more gentle landscape than here. And so I've seen them. I've seen five together. Um, I've seen a bunch of ten thousand gallon tanks together too. Um, they use a lot of water in the summertime and they have really shifted the paradigm of thinking. So the locals are conserving water and conserving resources and they love their baby salmon up there. And there is a whole front and effort, uh, towards water conservation. They got big signs up on the streets. Uh, they put little fish on your mailbox if you're forbearing and storing in the winter. Um, it's a, it's a big education process. You know, we suggest we start doing that, uh, in the city and reduce our own use levels before we start pointing upstream. Uh, local landowners, let, let's reduce our use, which will reduce our need to draft eighty-seven, ninety-seven thousand gallons of water a day.
Okay. Thank you. And, um, just a point of, of again, procedure. Um, I see a lot of valuable comments being made in the, in the chat. Um, and I just want to reiterate that the counselors, um, really need to hear these, uh, comments. And so as much as possible, if we could, in essence, limit the side conversation in the chat so that the counselors can focus on what's being said. Um, and we'll, we'll definitely make our every effort to give everybody time to speak. So other questions from the council for any of our presenters. Uh, Richards, your hand is up.
Thank you. Uh, Todd and Danny, thank you so much for your presentation. A lot of work into that. One of my concerns of looking at Don Allen's rainfall going down and climate change and then California drought. We seem to be skirting this level where we're okay to draw from, from Leffinholdt Creek. But if things were to get worse, they might, then it would create a problem. And therefore we need to have uphill storage, reservoirs, that type of thing. My question to you is that what municipalities in California have gone the route of creating reservoirs, catchment ponds for a municipal water system? I'm not talking about an individual home or a park, but an actual municipal water system. In our case, we serve about a thousand water customers. So I'm just curious, and again, I understand the concept, but where has that been applied in California in a municipality? Thank you.
Yeah, I went to school in San Luis Obispo, so I'm from down south. Sorry. The, um, Morro Bay. And Cambria, Atascadero. They all have groundwater reservoirs that they use. They got less, less steep terrain and more open space, but, and also a history of having those reservoirs, um, early on, uh, during development. And California is blowing up and there's just a lot less room. You know, what I see is a lot of water even stored with humble Bay municipal water here in Arcata. They got it pumped up to these huge tanks up in the forests and they're all over the community forest and they're gravity feeding, uh, the users and the customers.
So when communities build the, uh, storage tanks or whatever, how big are they? Are we talking about a million gallon tank or million gallon catchment pond? I need to have some perspective put on it so I can kind of visualize what it would take for Trinidad to have that type of support to make the water system more resilient. I, I just need someone to frame up the scope and the scale.
Yeah, we took a run at looking at different sized tanks and costs, um, not an in-depth review. And, and we're definitely not engineering this, but, um, we just wanted to look at ourselves. And some of the larger tanks are forty-seven feet in diameter and twenty-seven feet high, I believe it was. Um, those, those hold the five hundred thousand gallons of water. And, uh, I don't know if, go ahead, Danny. Take your hand up.
Yeah, no, that's a real good question. We didn't dive into that, but it, the, there's a lot of information on tanks. I think you're, you, there's, I mean, everyone, even humble bay water, which I don't use either in Dallas Ferry, but, um, every, every community in the West has relied on storage, uh, for vast Trinidad or West. Trinidad is in such a beautiful spot because you've had your whole existence where you've been able to rely on water that's comes out of a creek for a hundred plus years and then it goes right into a treatment facility. So you're, you're, you're closer to like those private landowners that's in the Matola and other places, but you're a municipality, a small one. And I think storage is, it is your only other alternative. And the beauty of what Todd's presented here is there is tons of water in the winter. Yes, it might have to be treated, uh, but if you could find the lands to put where you could get, you know, these tanks on them would be definitely the simplest thing. Um, and but they, tanks come in five hundred thousand gallons, things like that. Um, if they're on flat ground, the engineering gets a little better. There's always cost to permit. There's costs anyway, which way you go. They're big in, in both ways. I don't know which are going to be less. Um, my hunch is if you maintain independence, it might be cheaper in the long run, uh, but we know Trinidad's, the West is, is the expensive properties. Um, you're in that neighborhood, but depending on what you could have access to. It's just another alternative, you know, we're, you know, and we're just, but you can get these big tanks that are five, six hundred, seven thousand gallons, you know, uh, and, uh, but, you know, if it's a five hundred thousand gallon tank and you use sixty thousand on average a day. You know, that tells you how many days you've got to get you through your critical dry periods. It's not an issue water in nine months a year. It's, it's three months and that's what drought's driving and we're all paying attention to it, but we're just trying to explore what the watershed could still provide if you had the ability to store. Cause even Steve's presentation with, uh, humble bay water, you're still going to be potentially, as he suggested, there may be tanks or something, uh, also involved. So it's just, we're just giving you some more tools. Cause I mean, but it's easy to figure out kind of what you would need to get through the critical dry period. You know, and how much land you might need to put that number of tanks on. Um, I think building reservoirs up on the marine terraces or something is another option. There's plumbing to all these options, um, pipeline or any of them, but deciding what, what's affordable and Steve's numbers are weak. We don't have any numbers. Um, but we're just throwing out ideas that do work in other areas that, that could work for the city if you want to maintain some independence.
Thank you.
Uh, Dave, I saw your hand was up.
Um, yeah, thanks a lot. I liked that. That was very detailed and very informative about the, the past history and it kind of gives you what's going on under our feet. Um, but I was taking to understand that alluvium is almost like a sponge. It is dependent on consistent precipitation to a, a certain extent. Um, you can only extract before the turbidity becomes so bad that, that it's not worth treating. That be the, the case of these, if we go on the, the current rainfall trend according to the best fit line. Um, I was looking at that.
Uh, Dave, yeah, that, that kind of gets back to the question that was asked of Steve and he said, we might be able to shed some light on that as your scientists and, and the alluvium is a big sponge, but it's an old sponge. And it's kind of like a sink sponge that's really worn out and it doesn't hold water as well or it's frayed and, and but the big thing that's gone on with those thirty to sixty or seventy feet of sand on each of those surfaces is it's just gravity's been, it gets wet and it dries, it gets wet and dries. It's compacting. It's, it's gone through, it's got eighty to a hundred, two hundred plus thousand years. It's just been sitting there and it's flat, so it holds water. But the, the sponge, not all the water can come out of the sponge. It just can't.
And that's less and less absorbent as time goes on.
And that's, that's, and then, and there, cause there's, uh, the minerals weather and all these things. So the, the, the pore space gets clogged. It gets more and more clogged with time. It's like a filter and water doesn't pass through it as well. And it's not affected by roots and things because they only go down ten feet or so. You know, trees and stuff. It's just a big pile of gravel. So it's changing gradually. Climate is the big player, but to answer the question, the tr- springs usually aren't very turbid. Water coming out of the aquifer, the alluvial aquifer is usually not going to be very turbid because it's been underwater. It's moving, it's under rock, meaning it moves slowly to release itself. The turbidity comes from all those streams in the watershed. That, that the rain's falling on them, the same that's falling on the aquifer. And then that's where your creeks go up and down and you get your peaks. And that's where your turbidity is coming from, from erosion on those hillsides primarily. There's not much erosion on the flat areas. Um, and then it gets tumbled down through all those miles and miles and hundreds of miles of stream channel practically. And Leffinholdt and then you, you get it at the end basically. And it's picked up all this, this dirt that, that makes for complicated cleansing. You know, so.
Yeah, I also appreciated that your description that none of this is all in one spot either. It's all, you know, kind of scattered and comes together at points here and there. Um, I think that, that just clarifies a lot to, you know, the other portion of this of when does it come together? When would you want to set up a tank and stuff like that? So, all right. Thank you.
And if I could just ask another question. So if I'm reading the map correctly, um, there's been talk of recharge ponds. There's been talk of, of diversion in the stream to slow it down to encourage more recharge. If I'm reading that map correctly, that tells you, that would inform where these, these efforts would be most useful. Um, we want to build a recharge pond. If we want to slow the creek down, we would do it in a place that is really through one of these terraces where it's known that there's, um, a nice deep uh, section of this, this gravel. Is that a, also a true statement?
Essentially, if you took the reservoir approach, a big, big pond, you know, like every municipality or the humble bay has a reservoir too. You know, it's Ruth Lake. And so you, you'd shoot for those flat areas. Cause if you try to do reservoirs and the grading that's required and deal with the seismic risk or earthquakes, you don't go to the steeper ground and you've got to find the gentler ground for reservoirs. And, and yeah.
Well, but I, I was, I was thinking instead of a reservoir, more of this, this notion. I'm just trying to get from your perspective, um, the feasibility of this, this idea to recharge the aquifer by slowing the creek down by perhaps creating, um, a big catchment basin. That's not a dam. It's just a place to store water that slowly percolates back into the aquifer. So that we're in essence, trying to enhance the recharge from every year's rainfall.
I, 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 you, you, one, one quick thing, Todd, and that is that once the water's in the surface water stream system, your steeper channels and even coming down to those photos that Richard showed of where the fish are gone and the swimming holes are gone where your low gradient, uh, gravelly channels, there's still bedrock pretty there's still bedrock pretty close to the surface underneath those channels. And there's not a lot of recharger. You can slow the release with woody structures or something to slow the velocities down. But you can all, it's just a thin gravel pile and it's the width of the channel. And then you got to the side slopes. You just can't recharge there like you could with reservoirs up on your big flats that are sixty feet deep or something. And then you've got the ability to put water, it collects rainwater. We're talking kind of rainwater in those settings. Then you're not even taking it from the creek. And, but then if you didn't line those ponds, then they would leak into that gravel pile and they would help the process of recharging the alluvial aquifer.
And that's what I was asking about is the, is what techniques could be used in our particular watershed to recharge the aquifer? So you did answer that up in the maybe tier four, tier five. So Richard, I don't know if your hand is still up or did you, did it pop back up again? No, okay. Tom or Jack, I'm just.
I got a couple of questions. So if we, if we were to sit on this creek like we have been for years, not really take much action, do you see, Tom or Danny, what do you see in the future for this creek in terms of the way it's decreased every year? Are, are we looking at a, a time fairly soon that that creek would actually be unusable or we couldn't get water from it? Based on what you've seen?
Go ahead, Todd.
Well, I mean, we have never curtailed drafting rates and we could even reduce the amount of draft, drafting now. We could do pulse drafting. But we've never gotten to that level where it's been a major threat. Um, we are needing to recharge, you know, the aquifer. And we haven't seen big, long duration rainfall or prolonged spring rainfall to help us along with that. So I don't believe we're doomed. I believe we should do something and winter storage is certainly a, a good recommendation there. Increasing infiltration, it's not, doesn't all come from pizza. It can rain like crazy, it can run off. We really need to increase infiltration into the near surface groundwater. And that could be done with, like Danny was saying, constructed log jams, floodplain inundation. Um, we restore roads and prevent ditch runoff from rifling into our streams and increasing peak flows and rather shed that water back onto the near surface ground. So there are, we're getting close, but I don't think we're in a threatened situation.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add to that, Jack. You've got three to five years based on Steve Allen's presentation. I think all we're saying is you, you, you got three to five years, one or another. But I think your question is, and, and I think everyone agrees that all likelihood, it's going to get worse in terms of creek flow. So you've just got, you've got the three to five years to figure out. You're going to spend a bunch of money one way or another. And, uh, but do you, if you can get those properties somewhere nearby, it's very similar to what Steve was saying. Pipeline, you need storage, got to find properties, you got to do some of this stuff. You still got to do some of those things both ways. It's, it's, but, and, and we can look at the map as, as Steve suggested. We haven't tried to do that. I mean, we have a very limited study here. And, but we wanted to present what we think are options. But I do think if there are vacant lots somewhere that are on relatively flat ground somewhere, those should be the ones the city could target. And then you've got the potential and then you got to figure out the plumbing and all that. But I think you do got to, you got to do something, you know.
Let me ask then, the, the second part of this is, let's say we want to do some of these things. What's a, some kind of a timeline? How fast can these things be, be done? Some of the ideas you have, besides the big storage tanks.
If you could find property in the next, by next summer and, and once it was in your ownership or you had some easement from someone that, that volunteers a chunk of their land, that they say, yeah, I'm not going to see it. You could put three tanks of 500,000 here. I've got the area. It's a stable area. Then you'd start the process of design and permitting, you know, and, and, and figure out, try to. Then you can really start figuring some costs, but the property would be the first one.
What about recharge ponds and those kinds of things? Can that be, how long does it, do those things take to get to put, put together?
Same kind of thing, I would think, and Steve can weigh in on this. But if you got Green Diamond that said, yeah, we can go in the middle of terrace three or four and on a big flat that's a thousand, fifteen hundred feet long or wide, you know, east to west. And they said, we'll take that ground out of production and you can dig a big hole here. But you could get started. It's the land's the first thing as an option in my mind. Then, then all the other things can start happening fairly quickly, you know? Water rights, if it's rainwater, no one has jurisdiction over rainwater. You can collect rainwater. You're going to have to, a lot of engineering for building the pond possibly, and then how to plummet to get it where you can treat it or do something with it where it's available to you. But, you know, years, I think, you know, two to three years, you could have any of these options potentially done, but that's just off the back of the envelope. If you had the land.
All right, thank you.
Tom?
Um, I'm fine at the moment. Thank you. Very interesting presentation and a lot of the questions that I had in my mind were already answered through his presentation. Actually, one question that just popped in mind is you mentioned Green Diamond land and have they been open to this type of thing? And the, in your knowledge of, of allowing easements and such to build recharge ponds or reservoirs in any other places that you've worked?
Not that I know, but I think all our neighbors, I mean, Mendocino is going to have to deal with it with the timber companies down there. They've got to figure solutions. You're trucking water from 101 to Mendocino. You know, a very affluent area, it's similar to Trinidad and gorgeous. No, but I think they're good neighbors. They, they, they played a big role. And sure, it's, it's for dollars and cents, but Eureka has a community for us now because Green Diamond gave up lands and, you know, they keep talking. It's been floated around for fifteen years. It, when does Murray Road terraces, as you go over to Fieldbrook? When do those lands are all chopped up? So when do they get subdivided, you know? And, and, and that's the same thing. You know, all of us have concern about those big changes to our communities. But they, they're, I, I think the drought affects them too, you know? So I, I don't know. I don't have an example.
Thank you.
All right. So go ahead, Jack.
One more question. You've talked about, you know, being independent of Humboldt Bay water and being able to create enough water for our town. Do you see this, that we would be actually better to? Better to combine with Humboldt Bay and what you want to do? Or you think we can be independent and create enough water for this community?
Um, if, I, 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 all, all I'm saying is, is I, I, that's you and your community's decision. I mean, I, I love your neighborhood too, as a Dows Ferry resident. But I think my understanding is, I don't know how you could pursue both, but if you can, um, I just don't know what the capital outlays are right from the get-go to kind of try to go bound both paths at the same time. If you could, that would be good and it didn't bankrupt the town. But I, I, I think that you could with the proper amount of land, thirty acres, something that was reasonably flat, probably generate the, all the security you'd need as long as population didn't double or triple, you know? Cause remember, we're only talking about storage for the critical dry period, the ninety days. You know, that's, that's the numbers you need to focus on. And that's where, you know, sixty thousand gallons a day and people aren't even changing their use much. Whereas if they change their use a little and then fixing, I'm glad to hear you guys are well on the way of fixing the pipes and getting some funding for that. Cause that's all you've seen, lots of studies, that's a lot of water that, you know, but you don't have the storage for it right now. So either way, you need storage. Most, most communities rely on storage.
Uh, Todd, did you have something that you were going to add to it? Or, or I thought I saw your like, okay. Any last questions before we open it up for public input? All right. So at this point, again, just to reiterate, if you could introduce yourself and if you're a water customer, again, that's a request that's been made or been passed on to me by quite a few folks. And so at this point, we were seeking input and also we have some very talented engineers on the call too, for additional clarification or whatever. So please use your hand raised in the Zoom world if you are. And then at some point I'll also check with the folks who've called in. But I have three screens of people to track. So once you raise your hand, it's easy for me to see who wishes to speak.
I got my hand up.
Go ahead.
In the chat box, I see a lot of talk about using beavers to create structures that retain water. And what in the Matola they found was that they can slow down the water release, but it's only lasting for the beginning of the summer in that critical dry period. Now, when you get to this month, they're not seeing that. The creeks are still going dry. They even have log jams with betonite, like little mini dams and big, you know, gravel sponges with willows around it on BLM land or they can really stretch the rules and build this stuff. And their idea is, is floodplain inundation. And they have groundwater wells and they're showing that they are spreading the water out and slowing it down. But I believe what Tasha McKee has found is that during this time, those log jams and those beaver analog dams are still going dry. So what they started to do is build ponds in stream on these floodplains. And they flip roads into it that have collected water. And those are kind of lined. I think they've been putting betonite liner in them. Um, so they slowly, uh, they fill up fast, but then they leach out slower and hold water longer than the in-stream structures. And the way they break those up are passive structures are good for retaining water during early summer. But these ponds that are near in-stream and leach out, like people have been suggesting, retain the water longer. And they've been constructing on those, those in Lost Man Creek on BLM lands. Um, it might be a little bit more difficult in our Steelhead Stream here in Luffenholz Creek. Different rules, different land ownership. Thank you.
All right, Jim, I see your hand is up. And you're on mute, sir.
I'm very seldom on mute. Thanks for reminding me about that. Uh, I was a city council member in Trinidad for six years. Had to leave a couple of years ago. So I have the advantage of observing what's going on in Trinidad now from the standpoint of being gone geographically for two years and also in a different locale. I agree with all you guys. But you know, the old saying, to a hammer, everything looks like a nail. And you're all scientists and data people. So let me, as somebody who lived and worked in Southern Humboldt, Mendocino County for thirty years as a land surveyor, with the folks that you're talking about, who have an interest in doing the right thing. Basically, in terms of the social milieu down there, everybody's in the same business and they, and much of the, um, holding people to account in terms of doing the right thing is based on peer pressure. Uh, I'm not so sure that's the same social milieu as Trinidad has. And so for one thing, jurisdictional issue, you guys are all represent a very specific area. Danny mentioned anywhere you got thirty acres, you can build a retention pond. I'm not sure what the area, the total area of Trinidad is. But you know, there's a big difference between doing this in Southern Humboldt where everybody has basically the same culture in doing it up here. Also, I live in a residential neighborhood, not by choice, but because we need to be down here of about thirty thousand people. We're in a real, we have real problems down here in terms of droughts. The entire Russian River watershed is being utilized, overutilized. In my neighborhood, in my town alone, probably fifty percent of the peoples, if you go by whether their lawns are green or not, or brown, you can see that not everybody feels an obligation to do things for the common good. I'm not so sure Trinidad is any different. And I noted Don Allen's comment that he knows why there's more water taken out at night. And you all probably saw that. Maybe he can talk about that a little more. But I think that's a good example of the fact in my mind that not everybody in Trinidad is thinking in the same terms that you guys are. I agree with you totally. But how to get people to do the right thing is becoming an increasingly difficult problem. Much of it, I guess, is politics. I'm, uh, but, but just trying to get people to do the right thing, enough of them to make a difference. I'm not so sure is possible. Uh, and comparing Trinidad with Southern Humboldt, Northern Mendocino, I, 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 I just don't think it's a good comparison. So I'd like to have you guys on the council. When you get a chance, tell me about how you overcome the jurisdictional issues. How do you build a pond on county property that the city of Trinidad has a grant for? I mean, there's all kinds of things that I see that would stand in the way, not of the science, but in getting it implemented. So that, that's really what I have to say.
Thank you, Jim. And I'm just going to reiterate, thank you very much. Um, I'm going to kind of jump in on the three minute time. I want to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak. And then if there's more time at the end for, for more comments. So thank you very much. No, no, you're, it's fine. I just wanted to make sure that we, we do our best to stay on the three minutes. So, Mr. Hankin.
Yes, thank, thank you very much. All right. This very quick comment. I'm wondering, Todd and Danny, is it possible for you to put up Don's rainfall data for a minute, you know, to just share the screen? I'd like to just talk about that briefly. And the backdrop is I've been looking at annual rainfall records, you know, from Woodley Island, which go back to nineteen forty-two and comparing them with Don's rainfall record and also with the Eureka Arcade Airport record. And I found that they're just like mind bogglingly highly correlated, like, you know, point nine eight almost. I mean, it's incredible. And I just wanted you folks to say that, you know, the graph that you grow, uh, used here, this is kind of like found data that Don just happened to start collecting in nineteen eighty-two. And visually, like when I look at it, if instead you just did the last twenty years, I think you'd have R square for people that don't know, like the, the line they fit here. You know, there's about, there's less than 10% of the variation up and down, you know, that's explained. That's a very weak relationship. And I know that it probably alarmed lots of people. And I think, I just want to point out, I think it requires a lot more explo- exploration to see what's really going on here, you know, whether that's a real trend or not. And you'd have to work it out by different intervals of time, go back to the longer record, et cetera, et cetera. But that is a statistical point, but I, again, I think it's, it's a, it's just coincidental to John that Don started collecting in nineteen ninety-three and he missed the ninety, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, which were like these incredibly low water years, right? They would have, the, the three years before this data set started would have been bound down, 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 you know? So anyway, I just wanted to point that out. It's, it's always a very tough thing to look at. And, you know, trend analysis like that. That was it. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Danny.
And I think what's important to note here is it is variable. We don't know with
the specific decadal oscillation and, and so we don't, we can't control that. We don't know. It could rain like no tomorrow this year.
And, and just to be clear, uh, no one expects anyone to be able to predict the future with any certainty. So we're appreciating, we're appreciating trends and general statements. Um, uh, I see, uh, Ms. Thompson or I'm not sure who's on the.
I need it. Yeah. Yeah. Anita Thompson, Trinidad water customer. Uh, tonight, if the council decides not to connect to Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District, then the city council is disagreeing with four out of the five members of Trinidad's Water Advisory Committee, which was formed by the city council to find a viable long-term alternative water source for Luffenhold Creek. Two of these members are on the city council and one has been on the city council and was the mayor of Trinidad. The other member is chair for Trinidad's Planning Commission. These four individuals who want to connect to Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District have done the important research. If the city council just makes a decision not to connect to Humboldt Bay Municipal Water, they are not representing the majority of Trinidad's residents who want to connect. If the city council makes a decision not to connect to Humboldt Bay Municipal Water, they are ignoring Trinidad's water ad hoc reports and data and the city of Trinidad's past and present ongoing independent engineering reports. Here is an excerpt from one of the letters submitted to for tonight's public comment, which demonstrates to me the real reason some people are opposed to Trinidad obtaining water from Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. Quote, Harp has been advancing the city's position in appeals filed in Humboldt County Superior Court and the Interior Board of Indian Appeals. Those efforts will be undercut if the city now reverses its position and enjoys a ranch, joins a rancheria and seeking to bring McKinleyville water north of the Little River. It is not a foregone conclusion that the rancheria will be successful in its bid to bring water up from McKinleyville, unquote. City Council, this is not a political issue, but a basic human rights issue. Water is fundamental to human survival. Trinidad residents need and deserve city leaders who are committed to water security. The city council represents Trinidad's residents, businesses and the school, not West Haven, Arcata and the surrounding Humboldt County, not Harp. The city council should consist, should consist of objective members who listen to their constituents and protect their resident's safety and wellbeing. Lastly, many of us are shocked that the city of Trinidad has not yet signed a contract to connect to Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. It is an obvious solution for a long-term water scarcity problem that is getting worse due to our climate emergency. We need to act now. Tonight, take action and connect to Humboldt Bay Municipal Water instead of continuing to do nothing or follow dead ends that may lead to the, the demise of Trinidad. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Uh, Mr. Miller.
Thank you. I, first of all, I'd like to, uh, bring my screen down so I can notice I'm looking at the camera. Um, I'd like to thank all of the members of the council for the intense work that they've been putting in. And I know because I was on there. It's tough work. Thank you, guys. A couple of quick questions. My, uh, friend Dave Hankin discussed a lot about statistics and trend lines. And, and he, um, said we need to explore trends a little bit more. And can I suggest that trend lines are based on past data? We want to project the future. Now Todd Kramer mentioned, well, we just don't know much about the future. And Steve, I appreciate your comment that we did. Just to be clear, we don't know, nobody knows. But there are professional climatologists who are running the most sophisticated, uh, climate models in the world, who are using the biggest computers in the world to try to give the best scientific estimate of what the future holds. Steve, I agree. We don't know. But who can we or should we be listening to for the future? And the science, the climatological reports, as noted in the California Climate Assessment of two thousand and eighteen by top California climate, climatologists working over two full years before they made the report, said the following, there will be greater variability of rainfall patterns in California in the future. That means that we have a higher chance of more rainfall. We cannot know these data from past trend lines, looking at the past. Basically climatologists are saying different. It's different now. But may I note something? Not only is there a higher probability of more rainfall, there is also a higher probability of less. Any trend lines we are predicting from Dave Hankin or, or any other local hydrologists who've been looking to past reports for however many decades have been declared essentially worthless by modern climate scientists. They are saying there may be more or there may be less, yeah, less water. Danny Haggins, I see you nodding in agreement. I am not concerned about having more water. We are fortunate to have a lot. Get your umbrella, folks. I'm concerned about less water. And we need to have a plan for when we, over two or three or four seasons, we get less water than the trend lines of history predict. It is reasonably likely, scarily likely, that our creek will go dry. This is the whole reason I changed my opinion. While I was in the, in the last year, for the last ten years on my council, I agreed with Steve Madron's plan of we ought to work on the uphill, um, catchment basins and so on. I pushed it in city council. Anybody who knows me has heard me say that. In the last year, I've been reading climate reports, which say we cannot depend on past data. No matter how good we are, our squared, uh, analyses and our pretty graphs. The future basically depends on, thank you. I want Steve Laudwick and all the councillors to realize we need the quickest and most efficacious way, the cheapest way that we know to get storage for the dry season. That is our goal and there's one solution far better than the others. The ones uphill are way out of, uh, our knowledge base. It's going to take a long time.
Call him out.
Right. Listen to what I'm saying. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Uh, thank you. And Mr. Bruce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my name is Dick Bruce and my wife Lois Harrington and I live at seven eighty Underwood Drive and have been city residents, business owners and water customers for over forty-five years. We're in favor of the city partnering with the Trinidad Ranchery and bringing Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District service to Trinidad. In the forty-five plus years I have lived here, I have seen Trinidad's climate change. Gone are the long wet winters and foggy moisture laden summers. The result is that all local rivers and creeks now flow at substantially lower levels. Luffenholz Creek is now barely flowing from August until the fall winter rains arrive. I don't see this changing in coming years. Trinidad's water supply is at risk of drying up and if that happens, so is our Trinidad community. If you think about it, what are the most important things a community needs? First off, you need people that are the backbone of the community. You also need schools, retail businesses, police and fire services. But I would argue that the most important thing a community needs to survive and prosper is a safe and reliable water supply. In moving forward, Trinidad's water supply should no longer be viewed as reliable. Opponents of bringing Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District water to Trinidad will tell you to develop the Luffenholz and Mill Creek watersheds using untested methods that will require easements and agreements with upslope private property owners to install as yet undesigned and unproven systems, not to mention environmental permits. Obtaining those agreements and permits will take years and may not even be possible. They will also tell you that bringing Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District water to Trinidad will open the door to unrestrained growth and ruin the character of our community. Let's be clear here. Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District water is coming to Trinidad's doorstep, whether some in our community like it or not. The Trinidad Rancheria needs that water and they'll get it. And unlike the unproven proposals for the Luffenholz watershed, the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District is a guaranteed source of year-round, safe, clean water that will sustain the needs of Trinidad for years to come. In the final analysis, I believe it is important that you not lose sight of who you are as a council and whose interests you must represent. You're not the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors or members of the County Planning Commission and it's not your duty or responsibility to make decisions regarding water policy for the unincorporated area of Humboldt County North of Little River. You're the Trinidad City Council and it's your duty and responsibility to make sure the citizens and water customers of the city of Trinidad have safe and reliable water for years to come. Please choose to partner with the Trinidad Rancheria to bring Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District water to your constituents, the citizens of Trinidad. What a terrific opportunity to work cooperatively together with our neighbors at the Rancheria for the benefit of all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce. Mr. Allen.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, um, to Danny Haggins and Todd Kramer from PWA. Um, I was riveted by their presentations, uh, really good stuff. I kind of feel like, you know, a lot of the public comments and, and, you know, I guess I'm guilty of this too. You know, I hear, uh, let's follow the science, but then all the comments are, are basically ignoring what Danny and, uh, and Todd just told us. They've told us that there is plenty of water in the Luffenholz Creek watershed to supply all the city's needs. And I hear this arrogant attitude that the city council just needs to listen to its constituents and nobody outside the city. Um, well, you know, we've been paying sales tax to the city, even though we're not residents of the city. So, you know, I'm just really tired of that arrogant attitude. You know, and, uh, let's follow the science as, as Dwight was saying, and listen to the advice that's been given to you by your consultants, PWA. They are the experts in watershed geology and hydrology and they have given you a very excellent report. So, you know, I'm, I'm really tired of the arrogance from the people who say that you should just be listening to city residents because their, the city residents aren't the ones that are going to feel the impact of this. And from what I understand, if, if the water line is extended, Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District has to offer that to anybody along that line. So guess what? It's West Haven that's going to feel the impacts. So you know what you can do with your arrogant attitude. Thank you.
All right. Um, if we could, um, try to keep our emotions in check just as a, as an overall every, uh, for everyone comment, just because, uh, we are getting into some very personal decisions. Um, so if we could.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could you please ask whoever's going to be speaking if they're a water customer or not, which is how boring it is. Thank you.
Yep. Other public comments. Mr. Hankin.
Yes, I'm not certain this is the right time to make this comment because I was kind of anticipating that you folks would have a motion to, you know, take some action and then there would be some discussion about and then comments. So, um, structurally, I'm not quite certain what's going on, but I'll try to give some brief remarks that I've, uh, actually written out so that I won't lose my temper. Uh, I'm a West Haven resident since nineteen seventy-six and I've been a member of the board of the West Haven Community Services District, which provides water to West Haven for over thirty years. I urge the members of the council to reject the proposal to immediately join the Rancheria's plans to tap into the main line, line extension because I remain unpersuaded, uh, that it's necessary to do that at this point in time. In other words, I don't see the rush. The PWA just presented us with some ideas for improving the situation in Luffenholz. They gave you a timeframe for when that could conceivably happen and it's prior to the time that the pipeline would actually probably be constructed and delivering water. And I think you could tap in later on. West Haven responded to Humboldt Bay in exactly that fashion. We have all kinds of activities in our water district where we're trying to improve supply, improve water treatment. And we told them that if those, uh, uh, activities are not successful, then we wouldn't entertain, you know, connecting to Humboldt Bay, but we're sure as hell heck not going to do both of them at the same time. I think that's kind of crazy. If one works, we don't need to do that. Second observation is in discussions of the Trinidad water situation over the last several years, I've been, you know, um, plumbed into this quite a bit. I've been very struck with how little input there's been from the water, uh, treatment operators, the people that actually operate the Trinidad water system. And I think that means that you need to do something structurally with the water system. I think you need a water manager, probably modeled more along the lines of what we have in West Haven. And I encourage you to talk to our water manager about that to improve the authority and flexibility that that person has. In other words, you should be hearing from the experts who run your system and I have not been hearing that for the last three years, not at all. And then a final thing, I want to say something in a, hopefully not a, um, contentious way, but about, um, the, how disturbed I am personally, uh, and also offended, I have to admit it, by the recent rhetoric by proponents of the pipeline that the Trinidad City Council should be listening only to Trinidad residents, right? And I'm going to elaborate why Don mentioned one of the issues, which is that everybody in nine five five seven zero is paying an extra sales tax for Trinidad, even though we receive no benefit from it if we're outside the city. That happens all the time. That needs to be recognized. That's an income source for the city. Residents contribute to the economy in all kinds of different ways, attend the Trinidad school and on and on, obvious things. The reason I'm personally offended is because I spent thirty-five years working at the Marine Lab in Trinidad, working sometimes on projects that were of mutual interest to the Marine Lab and the city of Trinidad with the mayor and city staff, blah, blah, blah. Kind of obvious with the local crab fishermen and uh, uh, input for me is not supposed to be considered. Wow. That's not something that is in the spirit of the larger community that we live in. And then finally, the, uh, oh, and then people, it, it, I think on contrast, if there are people from the local community are willing to contribute their time and expertise when they have real expertise, that Trinidad City Council should welcome that. For example, Steve Madron has put in so much time, you know, trying to help the city out with Luffenholz Creek and his ideas have gone nowhere for years and years, not because he hasn't had that, but because the city hasn't responded. Uh, one last thing here, Dwight had one last thing because I think this is important too. Many residents of nine five five seven zero are concerned about the potential growth and, uh, development implications of hooking up to Humboldt Bay water, if that's what Trinidad did. Those have not been discussed at all really in this group. They haven't been discussed at council meetings. Why not? And I think that's a really serious issue that before the council ever takes an action on Humboldt Bay that they really need to study that. Like what are the implications for growth around here?
Thank you. Sorry, David, but thank you. Just to give everybody time. So more folks who want to weigh in.
Say something.
I, I would like to talk.
Okay.
Okay. I'm Mary Jane Polton. I live at eight eleven Underwood. We are water customers. Uh, I have a comment and then I have a question. My comment is that, uh, the Rancheria has or will have the contact, contacts or funding to connect to Humboldt Bay water, which I understand is the last hurdle for the coastal commission approval for the hotel. The water line is coming. So, uh, all of the comments about, oh my gosh, you're going to ruin our community by allowing this water line to come in and then development is just going to go crazy. I, I don't believe that is going to happen, but the water line is coming. So the city's decision is not going to affect that. And then my question is, uh, I would like to ask, uh, the PWA presenters if they have participated in or are aware of any recharge pond projects in Humboldt County that were completely paid for by grants or donations. And that would include the engineering, the permits, the construction and any land easements or purchases. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Jane. Uh, Todd or Danny, are you able to weigh in on that?
Um, I don't know of any that have been completed to date, maybe others, um, in that, in our community have some ideas. I do know that the, the, uh, South Monard Restoration Federation out of Southern Humboldt, they have been going through the permitting process and the design process to build two large reservoirs in Redwood Creek, uh, west drains west, uh, to east into the South Fork. West drains west to east into the South Fork of the Eel, right there at Redway. And that whole objective of that is water supply for low flows in the creek. It is not really intended, the way it's being presented, for community water, but it is a path that's well on its way. Supervisors have weighed in on it, the planning commissions, others. There's still controversy, but there's, there's a lot of discussion about building large reservoirs. Way would it see your needs here for getting through the critical period on private properties, ranches, so?
Well, yes, but it hasn't been paid for.
Well, you need to say that. Can you say it?
Well, I'm not, I'm not online anymore.
Uh, Mary Jane, you're, you're actually broadcasting. So, did Danny answer your question?
It was if they knew of any projects that were paid for by grants.
Yeah, he did, so that he was able to share what he was able to share, so.
Right.
They are, they are seeking grants to have that funded, yes, but it's not funded.
Right, it's not funded. Okay, that answers my question.
Thank you, and thank you much. Megan, if you, your turn, please.
Thank you so much. I am not a Trinidad water customer. I own my home in McKinleyville. And I, I really appreciate the efforts by all of the council members, Dwight and, and et cetera, ex-council members. I understand that leading a community must be just a very difficult proposition. Over the years, there have been people who have seen the climate change coming. Just as the early back-to-landers who, who came in and moved alongside the native inhabitants in the Trinidad area, they were seeing trends of our country not caring about the earth. And this has been, and so there are always, there have been this group of people who have been in the Trinidad Bay area for many, many years who have seen this climate change developing due to our industrial development in our country globally, et cetera. To, I, I guess what I'm trying to communicate here is that it's the same narrow vision that has gotten us into this problem of climate change, of looking for the one solution that requires an industrial model that always, that always decreases the resiliency of, of the land, of communities, of the, of the watersheds themselves to, to, to survive these huge peaks of use. So, when council member Columbus and other members say they want to have this narrow input by just the water customers, it's the same, and I don't mean to be disrespectful, I really don't. I really honor your time in investigating all of this. But it's, it's getting us into the same problem. Our resources are going to be only harder to keep in a community-based way. We're going to be fighting over resources more and more and more. And I witnessed this meeting tonight and it's, it's, we're already dividing because we're already seeing that our resources are drying up, literally. Lots of people have been seeing this happen for 30 years. They have taken steps. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just so you know, folks, I'm just going to say time and if you could be concise and wrap it up in the next 10, 15 seconds just to make sure everybody gets their, their time. Let's, looks like Leslie Zander van Dros.
Thank you. I would just like to say that I have been a Trinidad water customer for 44 years. And I would like to speak in favor of keeping independent a connection to the pipeline extension. From my point of view, Steve Madrone has some excellent ideas and that pursuing those make more sense to me, that we would have control in the long run. And we may even have some wonderful ideas that could be used by other small communities like ours. So, in other words, I would like you all to vote for remaining independent. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And I would like to consider the possibility of bringing it back to council. Just so everyone knows, we have, as a council, all read the, I think it was 75-plus emails. So, just know that we have also considered the, the very numerous and very extensive comments that have come in. But let's see if there's one or two more and then I would like to bring it back to council. Ms. Provol.
Gosh, I wish Steve would go first. I think we, I think we put our hands up at the same time. I don't have any prepared comments other than listening to this very hard decision that the city council has to do. But I am also in favor of an independent source of water for the community. I am a longtime resident of Trinidad, my whole life. And I own property in Trinidad and I'm also property in West Haven. And this is a beautiful area with watersheds that I think that we can protect and maintain. I want to, the thing that I think about is that the reason why we're talking about the Humboldt Bay water, it's been talked about before, apparently. But the reason why Trinidad Rancheria wants to have this water come to their area is not because of households that you and I, wow. It's not because we're cooking, we're taking a shower, or even watering our small garden. It's because of industrial development. And it will impact us all. And I know that when we have these water systems come in, there is going to be development. And I think that we need to really seriously think about that. I, I oppose the Humboldt community water system pipeline. I think there's so much more that we can do strategically as a community, safely and environmentally protect our area that we live. Thank you for letting me have a few minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Provol. Mr. Madrone. And I mean this with the utmost respect, Mr. Madrone, but I just want to remind you of the three-minute time.
No problem, Mr. Mayor. And frankly, I think it's, you know, really important that we all play fairly that way. And I want to just thank everybody on this call and all the people in the community for caring so deeply about our community. And when I say community, I mean the whole area. One of the wonderful things in the last 15 years has been the development of our Trinidad Bay Watershed Council. And we don't delve into divisive things. What we do is we find out where we've got common agreement and then we double down on working together as a community to do that. And that includes the entire community, all of the stakeholders. And as you know, we've raised over $12 million in the last 12 years, 13 years, to solve many problems like septic system leakage, stormwater runoff, pier replacement that the Rancheria did. And all of these things, all listed, the Watershed Council and our Watershed Plan in order to get high priority for this work. You know, Mark Twain said whiskey is for drinking and water is for fighting over it. And those words could not be truer today. But really, do we have to fight over it? I don't think so. I think there are so many things we can work on in agreement. And I applaud the council and staff, Becky and others, for seeking the funds that have now come about for drought to fix the leaks in the pipelines and to add more storage to the system. And I think it's high time that the city and West Haven Service District work together to get another grant to be able to provide cost shares to individual landowners to put in 5,000 gallon storage tanks with rainwater collection. A 5,000 gallon tank with a use of about 50 gallons a day per person can keep a household going for 30 to 50 days or longer if necessary in an emergency. And as far as groundwater recharge, I have never proposed large-scale things. I'm always proposing small scale. I'm going to be building two of them on my property next summer without a dime from the city of Trinidad. And I've identified probably 30 to 40 or more potential sites to do that. These are small systems that collect water, they're clay-lined, and they slowly leak out through the summer to add to the base flow. We know conservation measures can go a long way because, you know, Chiwi Lin found out when he did a study 10 years, 15 years ago or so, that in fact, water use in Trinidad had doubled over the last 20 years or so as demographics changed and retirees moved in, more time for landscaping, watering down driveways more often. So, there is this incredible increase. And in a drought, in an emergency, we can all cut back on those things, collect the rainwater to make it through the dry periods, add groundwater storage, fix the leaking pipes. And all of those things are absolutely possible. So, really, what I'm here to do tonight is to say, I support your option two. No matter what you do with your water source, you need to increase your storage. As PWA mentioned, you need to fix your leaks. We all need to be conserving, especially during dry periods. And we can add groundwater recharge and all these other things. So, option two is a good one. It allows us to keep moving on things we got to do no matter what option we pick for our source of water. So, let's do that. Let's continue that work. And again, I applaud you for that. And I really hope that we can all come together as a community and start working on the things that we have agreement on and move forward and try to avoid those things that are extremely divisive in the community. And again, community is all of us here. It doesn't stop at the city limits. And whatever happens outside the city, you're going to feel those impacts in town as residents, just like we're feeling the last two summers as Trinidad's been discovered. So, imagine that going even more as water becomes available. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Madrone. And I see Paula has her hand up and then I see Paul has his hand up. The old-fashioned way, actually using a hand. So, Paula and then Paul. You're muted, Paula.
You undid it and then did it again. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
There's been two reports this evening. And one clearly recommends hooking up to Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District, saying that this is an excellent opportunity financially. I don't need to reiterate what he said. PWA, in the quote that there's enough water in Leffenholz watershed, but we all agree we can't look into the future and there's drought predictions. I'm very confident with Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District because of their 60-year history in this area. It seems like a simpler. And I don't think it's a more invasive way environmentally to go when you think about the possibilities, which are not clear, of what it would take to get the easements and buy the land and do the permits for these multiple ponds. And then you need the infrastructure, the piping, to get it to the water plant and so on and so forth. I don't see that as being potentially less ecologically invasive than running a pipe across the highway because the pipe is already going to the Rancheria. And all past engineering reports that I've read suggest that Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District would provide the most resilient source of water, considering that, considering climatology reports and drought projections. So, I hope the council takes this opportunity to make a sound financial and I believe it's an ecological decision. We're not piping water from the Colorado River. The source of water for Humboldt Bay is a neighboring community. And all our neighboring communities have been using it for years. I've said enough and I've wrote enough. If you've written my letters, I've said much more than I can say in three minutes. I just hope you do the right thing. I know it's a hard decision. They, Humboldt Bay knows what they're doing. They've been doing it for a long time. They have an excellent reputation and I, I feel so confident they will get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Levine. Paul Rosenblatt from West Haven Community.
Hi, I'm Paul Rosenblatt. I'm the general manager of the West Haven Community Services District. I'm a 32-year resident of the Trinidad-West Haven area. I worked at the Trinidad Water Treatment Plant as, for five and a half years as a water operator and I live in the Leffenholz Creek watershed. Firstly, I want to say something about a council member, Columbus's comment, which he said from Tom Candrian. Tom Candrian said he hadn't been back to that fishing spot for a number of years, over a decade, probably closer to 20 years. My neighbors currently fish in that part of the Leffenholz Creek and catch cut trout, my neighbors' kits. So, there are fish in the creek right now that people fish for. So, I just want to be clear on that point. It's not that the fish have been devastated, but his swimming hole did get filled up by logging in the eighties. That's true. Secondly, I want to say that Trinidad, the zip code runs from Cornell to Big Lagoon and there's approximately 3,000 residents. Trinidad says that they have 1,000 water customers for their 335 connections. We have 235 connections and we think our matrix is closer to 499 or 2.1 per connection or a little 2.2 per connection, be that as it may. The folks in the zip code are about double. 60% population are outside of the systems that are served by municipal community water. So, there's a huge group of people that are not served by our water systems. Thirdly, I'd like to say that the Human Right to Water Act that the state passed makes it so if our water system has more water, we have to look at and, and we can serve more than our current or existing people within our district. We have to serve those people outside of the district. We can't make any laws or ordinances or rules. We have to serve those people within at least a half mile that, that have inadequate water. And then that opens up the door to those who would just like water. So, the city can't pass a law or resolution or ordinance that says we're only going to serve the people within our customer base right now. So, that's something that nobody's been talking about. And I'm not for or against the pipeline. I understand that resiliency has to be factored in and we need to all work on it hard. Lastly, I would really like the public to know because repeatedly, the district for the last year and a half has approached the city, council and planning commissioners that we would like to collaborate on resiliency planning. It has gone to crickets. It's very disappointing. And we have asked to have an inner tie for emergency purposes. Also gone to crickets. While we've gotten a few nice emails that say we appreciate your thoughtful comments and we'll discuss them further nothing. So, to be transparent, your neighbors would like to work with you for the community's betterment. And I want everybody at the meeting here today to know that. And the city has not wanted to discuss things with myself or board members that are interested in working together with you for working on water resilience. in working together with you for working on water resiliency in our community to live within our watershed streams, which is West Haven's approach to the current climate change and water resiliency. The final thing I'd like to say is, we produce, we have 235 cus, 232 connections, Trinidad has 335. In the summertime, our demand is about 30 to 35% of Trinidad's for 100 more customers. So clearly, some things could be done to figure out conservation measures. I applaud you for working on water leaks, right? That's a really critical thing. We're working on it too. And it's a unique moment in time where funding is available to fix some of these problems. So I just want to encourage you to continue working on water resiliency, whatever your measures are, and I want the public, our community, to know that West Haven CSD is committed to working on that issue for the neighboring water systems, and we would like to work with the city on that. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Paul. At this point, I would like to bring it back to the council. Very much appreciate the comments that have been made, and we do have in our packet, we do have three proposals, sort of places to start the discussion on how to move forward with this agenda item. So I'm looking to the council, and I'm going to look to Mr. West first.
I appreciate what I've heard Paul say. I spent some time talking to the regional water board and the man who's in charge of the Division of Drinking Water in Northern California. And one of the things he said is that if we pull this water in, one of the first things they'll have to do is begin to find, look at the people who are getting trucked water, and they're going to, it's going to be important that we begin to get water lines to people who have, who need clean drinking water. So one of the issues that we haven't talked about, and I think is really important, is what happens to our community if we start allowing more water. So this is the opposite side of what I've been hearing. We're looking at allowing an awful lot of changes going on in Trinidad, I believe, if we bring in the water. So I've been very concerned about, about the future of Trinidad. So as we look at Trinidad itself and say, you know, we have this little community that's going to need water, and they do, and the arguments are tremendous to say we should be getting water. However, the other side of it is, we will be possibly bringing in water opportunities for people outside our area, which is going to affect everybody in Trinidad. So we say, it's not going to, we're not going to be hurt. Now, people in Trinidad aren't going to be hurt by this. Yes, we are, because we're going to see changes in Trinidad in the future if we allow growth. I think growth is the biggest concern. If you look at water resiliency, there's no question. Humboldt Bay beats us, they have, the water that's coming from Humboldt Bay is pretty much given. We're going to have good water, and it's a good supply. I don't have any doubt that Humboldt Bay is a great company. I've heard a lot of good things about them. So I'm not, I think they do a tremendous job. If they put water, get water to us, we're going to get a lot of water. The thing is, though, what do we get with that water? And I think we need to think about what the future of Trinidad might be like if we bring in a lot of people. Now, I've talked to some people, I've talked about people that are buying up areas of land in, around our area, a lot of West Haven, not a lot, but there are some places where they're saying, looking ahead and saying, you know, we're going to be able to open up our community, and we're going to be able to get lots and put more houses on, and we're going to be able to expand, we're going to be able to use this land once the water comes. And I get very nervous about that. So, and I like listening to Pacific Watershed, I think they have good ideas. I think GHD did a great job on their report. It's very difficult. This has been three months of torture trying to figure out what to do with this. But I've looked at this, and I think this idea that we can work on a water supply, look at what we have up in the, with Pacific Watershed, continue to try to figure out how we can keep water going. And in the meantime, I know it's going to cost more, but we can take some time to see if we are going, if this creek's going to get lower. We're not going to get any water here for at least three years, more like five. And if we can, if we can expand our water system to do a better job, and we can hold onto water, I think that is the best idea without using Humboldt Bay water. And as Steve Madrone has repeatedly said for over a decade, probably two decades, it can be done if we're willing to put the time and energy into it. And right now, we have money. The money, or it's going to come in from grants, we put some money aside, and I'd like to see us try to develop this. If we, if two years or three years down the road, we see that the creek is getting lower and we're in trouble, we just have to bite the bullet, see what it's going to cost, and we can still hook up. We know that that six-inch pipe now is big enough to supply Trinidad as well. And it would mean working with the rancheria to try to find out, you know, how much it will cost. But at least gives us some time to try to keep Trinidad the way it is. I don't like the idea of suddenly making, of bringing the water and suddenly finding out that what we decided here changed the whole atmosphere and the whole way Trinidad looks and is. And I think very likely, we would see expansion in various ways, including if we have to pay for this thing, one of the things we've got to do is find a way to pay for it. We may be looking at getting some more land and trying to help pay for the water. So there's a lot of things that she has problems. I see, I think we could postpone it a little bit, and let's figure out what we can do and see if this creek has really got this kind of water supply that we're hearing Pacific Watershed tell us. I do again want to thank everybody, because this is, and there's a lot of people out there that I've talked to besides we're here tonight, who have said pretty much the same thing. They believe the water supply is there, they believe we can develop it to work it. So, sorry, I'm a little worried here, but I do think it's important to think about. I don't think we lose our ability to connect. It may make it more difficult, but we can begin to work on this resiliency that we have up in the hill and see what we can come up with. So I'm very interested in number two of saying, let's keep them in mind, and let's see what we can do ourselves.
Thank you, Jack. And I just want to make sure that we're lined up like cordwood here, as they say. So Mr. Columbus, Mr. Davies, Mr. Grover, in that order. Go ahead, Richard.
Thank you. Part of what I've been trying to do as Chair of the Water Advisory Committee is help the city council make decisions on long-term infrastructure projects that basically the city councils previously have neglected for about the last 18 years. In looking at studies from 2003, '08, '11, '19, a number of reports have been placed, and city councils have simply, I'm fortunate to say this, have not been up to the task to make difficult, long-term decisions. What we've been able to do in the last month is apply for grants to fix leaks and to get a better storage tank. So we're moving in the right direction for that. I want also people to understand that there are a number of options you have to increase water supply. But when you do increase water supply, it doesn't matter where it comes from. You still have more water. So if the concern is, well, we don't want to get more water because of unintended or uncontrolled growth, regardless of whether you build 100,000 or 500,000 or million-gallon reservoir up the hill, you're going to have more water. So whether you get it up the hill, or whether you get it through a six-inch pipe from Humboldt Bay, you're still going to have more water that the city will need to deal with. So what are the options? As I'm looking at the packet, the number two option is continue with the creek and maybe hook up to the rancheria Humboldt Bay pipeline later. That's really not going to work, because the creek itself is not necessarily going to get better, and delaying any action is what previous councils have done. You could either hook up to a pipeline that's coming anyway and potentially get grants now that are available from both state and federal, or you could say, we're going to try to get grants, purchase land, get permits, build reservoirs, and try to develop more water on our own up the hill. That's not necessarily as easy as it sounds, especially for a municipal water source that needs to supply people who want that water, who are counting on it. So my impression of this is, more water needs to come to Trinidad. The city council needs to look at, do they want to have a sure thing of having more water, or do they want to take the chance that they're going to try to develop something that may not work to their satisfaction? And when they finally get through that process and declare, maybe we need to hook up to a pipeline, it's going to be too expensive, or grants won't be available to accomplish that goal. So my initiative here is to get the council to make a decision. My recommendation is to hook up to Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District, but the council needs to make a decision and not decide we're going to do nothing, because that's not going to solve the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Mr. Davies.
Yes, thank you. So I have a number of points here. Some of them are related, some are just stand in isolation. Yes, water resilience is incredibly important. We weren't having this discussion until we were being asked if there was going to be water given to a hotel down the road. They've decided to pursue another option, which is wonderful. So one of my, one of my questions is, is the rancheria going to give up access to Trinidad water if a pipeline is built? And I keep saying if, because one side of this argument keeps saying this is going to happen no matter what. There's still, if you read through GHD's report, none of it is guaranteed. It's riddled with words like possibly, likely, maybe. You know, permitting is not a slam dunk thing, especially when you're working in the coastal, in the coastal area. There's no guarantee that either one of these projects, whatever, you know, PWA is promoting, Steve Madrone is promoting, Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District, will be paid for by grants. One side would like to say, yes, it's going to be sure, it's going to be paid for by grants. That is not a foregone conclusion by any means, and I've never, I haven't seen anything to be contrary to that. I've read through the comments. People are lucky they don't have a trinidad.ca.gov email address, because I've gotten a ton of comments, mostly duplicated, because they send them directly to the council, then the city clerk forwards them back to the council. So we've received, you know, oodles of them. They're now on the city website. But what has often been said that everybody in Trinidad wants this to happen, that's not true. There is a, there was a petition that was gone around door-to-door by local members, and approximately between 80 and 90 people have signed that petition. So this isn't a landslide on either side. This is a very closely divided, if that's the right term to describe this, issue in this town. It's not predominant one way or another. It's often, I asked the question tonight, there's no answer. What is the cost pass on? Be great to have the water, but if people cannot afford the water, then that's another issue. Eldorado Hills in the Central Valley was in a water crisis. These people had the most incredibly expensive water for years. People couldn't afford water. We have a very small amount of people to spread the cost over. Something to think about. The question of the availability of the water into outlying areas, if the pipeline has been put in, is that question has never been answered definitively. Paul from West Haven Community Services District touched on that. You can't say, you can't have water from this pipeline if there's a need for it. That's one of LAFCO's requirements. If there's a need, disadvantaged communities, and if your, if your water system is threatening to fail repeatedly. In my 20-plus, in my 20 years in Trinidad, our water supply has not been threatened to fail repeatedly. It would not fall under one of LAFCO's requirements to have water come in from another place. Todd Kramer stated tonight that he didn't believe that Lufenholz Creek was in a threatened state, that we're not in imminent danger. Give me a moment here, Steve. I'm just looking down my list here. Oh, so it's also been said, you know, the development thing is a big, is a big question. People say that land use requirements will preclude any kind of development. Once you introduce municipal water, septic setbacks are dramatically reduced, substantially reduced. You do not need to have the large lot size. The city of Trinidad is a prime example of this. Everyone in the city of Trinidad is on septic. We have city-sized lots, because we have municipal water. If we were all in our own well, the city of Trinidad would probably have, you know, a third of the people that they have, maybe even less than that, because of land use size. It's a really hard decision to make. I am in favor of option two, which would be to say, no, right now, no, thank you. Let's, in the future, if we need to connect, we could look into that. And with my caveat being that this needs to rise to the top of city business over everything that is happening, stormwater, I know we have these other projects, but time needs to be spent on this project every single day, until we can find a solution and move forward. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davies. Mr. Grover.
Thank you, everyone, for the participation tonight. Yeah, there's been a lot of talk about, you know, what's going to happen and what can happen. Personally, I did read through a lot of these comments too, and there was one thing missing. As a city representative, I get a little put off after two and a half years that nobody's asked me where I derive my decisions from. They all flog me with emails about what they know and where they've been and how long they've done this. So I, to this point, I've done a lot of listening, about two and a half years worth. But I just want to tell people that before I took this seat, I don't own anything in Trinidad, I just rent here. I get to be a steward of the land here. But the reason I took this seat is because I had the opportunity to go to Humboldt State University and get a planning and policy degree, which, which I think had something to do with it, I'd like to think so. I studied Euclidian zoning laws from 1924 to present and saw the evolution of the planning process. So in my mind, what I've seen with the evidence from the climatologists and other people on the Water Advisory Committee is that we don't know. So when you say, oh, we're going to get by, we're going to get by, you're taking a chance on the future. You're going to get by because you've got your little pieces of heaven here, but you're not considering that the east side of the state is burning, and it might be okay to have some sustainable, smart, green growth with best practices. It's a long and volatile process. It takes a lot of stakeholder and public participation before anything goes into effect as for development. You can develop places with energy independence, and, you know, they're not going to take over the area, because that's been said too. I mean, I'm sure the Native Americans could say something about that for us being here. But we're at a time that us as a species have just about destroyed the planet, and if we don't pull together and think of everyone as the whole, and I love the comments of where we can do kind of both these things parallel, but right now, what I've heard from the constituency was that they want to ensure that they have water more than 20, 25 years. They want to make sure there's water here 40 or 50 years down the road. It's a little longer vision. I've heard that they were saying that we should only think of Trinidad residents. I didn't hear anyone say only Trinidad. They just said, as a representative of Trinidad... They just said, as a representative of Trinidad, maybe put, you know, our needs a little bit ahead, but not, not only. So I, I didn't really agree with that. So at any rate, I've put a lot of effort in this a long time before I lived in Trinidad. And the ecosystem itself, I'm becoming very intimate with the creeks. I'm walking them, you know, a lot, the riparian areas, and there's a lot to do with the ecosystem of the surface water. So, you know, if people want to take a chance and hope that thirty, forty years that, you know, we can do it. All right, but I, I'd like to think, you know, with a little more vision. And so I am going to go for option one personally. I just think it's the right thing to do. And I would like to work with the rancheria, and I was at the meeting. And they are most likely getting water and they held up. They could have probably done it if we weren't there. They were giving us a chance to be part of it again. And it was great to be surrounded by people that had been doing it for a long time in a lot of different communities, and it gave me a broader vision. So I appreciate that, being part of that. And that's all I have to say right now.
Thank you, David. Mr. Miller, I'm going to keep it at the council level. So I believe we've all had time to provide input, so I'm going to very respectfully decline your request. I don't want to create a back and forth. We have all made our comments. I am going to weigh in with mine. I have Pacific Watershed Associates contribution to this, to this discussion. I think they've answered a lot of questions that we all either had in our heads or didn't know to ask. So I really appreciate the, the layer of detail. The understanding of the potential of the watershed has been very helpful to me. I am going to continue to stick with my belief that we are not yet fully, we have not yet fully developed our resiliency within the creek. And option two is, I'm prepared to make a motion to pursue option two with a slight change in the wording from continue to rely on Lufenholz Creek watershed. I would like to make a motion that we continue to develop Lufenholz Creek watershed water supply and consider Humboldt Bay water after the pipeline to Trinidad is built. And so I am making a motion and it's out there for others to consider.
I'll second your motion.
So we have a first and a second. Any further discussion from the council?
Just, yeah, one quick comment. Part of what I wanted with number one was a, maybe a question for Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District that they were still here. Because I always wondered, like, if we hooked up to them and then pursued the watershed things because then we would have the time to study the ecosystem and cumulative effects, just to make sure there's water. What would it say if we said, we don't need you anymore? Is there anybody here who could answer that tonight?
And, and, yeah, I don't know if, I don't, I don't.
Maybe that's.
I'm here.
Oh, there he is. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm here. You guys always ask the questions that we've never experienced. So I have no idea what the answer is to that, Councilman Glover, or Grover, I'm sorry. Couldn't tell you. We'd have to research that.
Okay, I just thought it'd be an interesting thing because it would definitely take the pressure off if, if there was a, you know, adequate water supply and then we developed it and said, thank you very much, and we don't need you anymore.
Right. Right. It's a good question. Did we lose the mayor?
It looks like it.
Oh, sorry. Well, I think we're well, let's give him a chance to get back. We'll need him to to vote. So, but I think we've pretty much covered this. What we may do, and maybe I'll ask Eli about this. Eli, should we, could we maybe do the last item and give Steve a chance to come back?
Can we, can we hear from Dwight, please? Just to hear, to be a council member. I'd like to hear Dwight Miller's comment.
Well.
It was made clear that's only now that the council's considering.
We're, we're going to make a vote just a second. I think we've got enough information to vote. I think we need to. Eli, should we go on and give, and, and do the next item? Because I think that'd be nice to do and then maybe give Steve a chance to get back. I'm going to, I'm going to text him and see if I can find out how he's doing. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm here.
His back.
Never mind. Good. All right. Good enough, Steve.
Apologize, folks. That is totally unknown to me. So can you fill me in on what I missed over the last?
We're ready to vote, Steve.
Okay, okay.
Our Richard first, maybe.
Yeah, Richard. Sorry, I'm coming in completely lost here, so.
I'm trying to understand the motion that you want to continue to use Lufenholz Creek, but you don't want to develop storage tanks up the hill. I'm just trying to figure out, is it a motion of continuing with the creek and then also building reservoirs and storage tanks?
Yeah, yeah.
Or is it simply just continue with the creek and don't do anything else?
Sorry, that's, I was hoping to make that clear. I want to continue developing the creek, enhancing the creek, what we're doing, right? Getting the grant for the leaks, getting the grant for the storage tanks to continue to develop the creek and not tie into Humboldt Bay Municipal Water at this time.
Can I, can I offer a suggestion to your motion then, Steve?
Please.
So continue to develop Lufenholz watershed and pursue, pursue storage opportunities and wait to hook up to, to consider hooking up to Humboldt Bay Water Municipal Water District.
I mean, yes, I mean, I really, I, I don't, I mean, yes. And I don't see a need to get specific because we have lots and lots of ideas and things are already in motion, in motion to get extra tanks, to fix leaks, to, you know, to continue working with watershed, Pacific watershed. But it, whatever the council is comfortable with. So again, I feel like I'm kind of disjointed here, but I want to continue, I'm proposing that we continue to pursue ways to increase our resiliency with Lufenholz Creek and not tie into Humboldt Bay at this time.
I understand that.
We have a limit on that, Steve. We're just going to say blank. Are we going to say within a, you know, I, I'd like to see us Tom made the idea that we need to have this as the number one priority, and I think that's the idea is this is not something that we can say, just let go. I think we need to say maybe in three years or five years, we're going to either we have seen this creek develop or we're going to attempt then to tie in.
No, I want this with the utmost, the utmost priority. This is, this is a, this is the thing that the city is working on.
Richard?
I just would like to see the motion not have a vague suggestion of developing something, but some teeth in it so that when you vote, it's going to be continue Lufenholz Creek and build reservoirs, storage tanks, whatever it is. I, if you just say pursue store or pursue more water, that's not specific enough.
True that, true that. I propose, I make a motion that we continue to pursue funding for water storage, for water treatment plant improvements, for leaky pipe, fixing leaky pipes. Those are the three things that have come up over and over and over that, that we need to do. So I, I make a motion that we pursue water storage, fix leaky pipes, and improve, make structural improvements to the plant and not pursue Humboldt Bay at this time.
We, we've already moved forward to get grants on the fixing of the leaks in the tanks. That's already underway. I, I really would love to have a motion about how we get more water. We already have the other two issues covered. So how do we make a motion about getting more water and being very specific so that we can direct city staff to take the next steps to proceed?
Steve, what if we follow the Pacific watershed suggestions for improving creek quality and, and resilience? And because they've got, because they've already told us what they plant, what they, these ideas are and as a and work on the creek and the plant. The creek's important.
I'm open to that as well.
But let's look at page sixty-nine of seventy-two in the, in the packet.
Number seven?
Number seven, yes.
Increase the supply of water to the Trinidad water system by the city to obtain winter storage and develop reservoirs. Increase infiltration to the gravel aquifer.
And you do at that time, he froze.
And or
and or appropriative rights to springs in the Lufenholz Creek watershed.
We're losing you, Steve.
Creative rights to springs in Lufenholz.
I think he froze again. Yeah, he's frozen.
All right, well. Maybe he'll, he'll be back in a second. So hopefully it will have his final for final statement for a vote. So we'll give him just a second to come back.
So further, I mean, he made it, he made a motion. I seconded it. If it's not specific enough for, for Richard to vote on, and then he can't, then he can vote no. And if we could just stop the chatting, I mean, this is ridiculous what's going on from the public. I don't know if we could just stop putting chats on here. It's, it's tit for tat going back and forth right now, and this is exactly what we tried to avoid in this entire meeting, and I think we did a pretty good job of it. And if, if city council members were doing this to the public, back and forth or to each other, this would be totally unacceptable. So.
Can someone read the motion?
Yeah.
All the question? Just want to understand what we're voting on.
Dave, do you have that motion?
Yes, I do. So at least the version two is what I'm going to call this one. This was the second one that was modified. It's to continue to pursue funding for water storage, plant improvements and leaky pipes and not pursue Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District connection at this time.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I.
I, I think what Steve was getting at was reading that number seven that Tom had pointed out on page sixty-nine. And I think that that's, that's the new version he was getting at. He asked if.
Here he is back, so let's ask him.
Okay.
Sorry about that. I'm on my phone now. So what was the question?
The last version that you have of the motion, was it number seven, page sixty-nine? Is that what you were reading as being the motion?
Yes.
Okay, so, so it would be number seven and then add, and consider Humboldt Bay Municipal Water after the pipeline to the Trinidad Rancheria is built. So at that time, which would be between three to five years, we will know how all of these improvements are working. And if they're not working, then at that point, we would consider the other option with Humboldt Bay Water.
Yes.
Could we have Dave read it one more time? Just so we're all clear about what we're actually putting on?
Yeah, and I, I think this sounds like a new motion, so I, I believe it would need another second. But the motion that Mayor Ladwig, I believe, has brought up is to increase the supply of, reading from number seven in the packet produced by, are the documents produced by Pacific Watershed, recommendations for Lufenholz Creek watershed, number seven. Increase the water supply to the Trinidad water system by the city to obtain winter storage and develop reservoirs, increase filtration to the gravel aquifer and or appropriative rights to springs in the Lufenholz Creek watershed and not to pursue Humboldt Bay Municipal Water connection at this time.
That is correct.
Do we have? Second that motion. I'll second the edited motion.
If, if I could interject. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if, if you want to have it that way, that's fine. Otherwise, the wording I had was, and consider Humboldt Bay Municipal Water after the pipeline to the Trinidad Rancheria is built. So in other words, we would do all of these things and then in three to five years, we would look at it, you know, are we where we want to be or not? And if not, then we would reconsider the rancher, with the pipeline with the rancheria, once it's built, with Humboldt Bay Municipal Water. So it basically would be everything that number seven says and consider Humboldt Bay Municipal Water after the pipeline to the Trinidad Rancheria is built. So in other words, we're not considering it now. We're considering it in three to five years. But we're going to rely on developing these improvements to the watershed that number seven lists.
Yeah, I, I think it helps to have the timeline. I will, I will, I will certainly accept that. If the council, if, if Tom, you will support that amendment.
I'd like to see it written down so I can read it. If we could type it into the chat or share, screen share it or something.
So, you know, while it's being prepared, so it's all of number seven. And then it's the last half of option two, which is and consider Humboldt Bay Municipal Water after the pipeline to the Trinidad Rancheria is built.
Does that work for you, Tom?
I still want to see it written down. It's been, it's been, it's been read back and forth so many times that it's, I think it's too unclear and I don't want to have any cloud over what we're voting on.
Yeah, I'm happy to take a stab at that. It's just going to take a second.
That's fine. I'm patient. Thank you. I saw Russell, Russ's screen light up, so he might want to say something.
Yeah, just briefly. So after the motion is read, Councilmember Mayor Ladwig, as the motion maker should affirm it's accurate, then you should ask for affirmation of the second part of voting.
Thank you. Did Steve disappear again?
Thank you for having the foresight to make this the only discussion item tonight to the mayor and Mayor Protown and City. Because I, I knew it was going to take a while.
We just lost the mayor again, it looks like. Okay.
Sorry, guys. I really, I owe everybody something. I really, I'm sorry for all this technical difficulties.
Can we see this?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Let me see. I gotta add Rancheria pipeline.
And if you could put at the end of that, after is built within three to five years. I want, I want us to have a timeline, if that's okay.
Or within three to five years or within, built within three to five years.
Should he put parentheses, whichever comes first?
I mean, really, what we need is time for the, for these measures to, to take effect. So either one is fine with me. But this continues to be the number one priority of the city. So three to five years, if that's what folks want. Tom, do you have a, a preference?
Hang on for a minute. I'm, I'm still looking at. Yeah, that's fine. Eric could say, you know, rights to the Lefenholz Creek watershed within the next three to five years and, and possibly. No, that's too modeled. Go, I'm fine with that. I'll second that.
All right. So we, I believe we have a first and a second, both the, the first and the second agree on the language. So at this point, Gabe, if we can have a roll call vote, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. So the motion is before you on the screen. Will be how it's recorded and we'll start with Councilmember Davies.
Aye.
Columbus?
No.
Grover?
No.
West?
Yes.
Davies?
I already voted, yes.
I'm sorry. Yep, I got you. I say yes, sorry. And Mayor Ladwig?
Yes.
Three yeses, two noes. The motion carries.
Thank you for that, Gabe, for sticking with us on that. Um, and thank you all for the discussion. I know that this has been a long process and we will continue to work towards resiliency at the city level for our water. So at this point, I need to bring up my agenda again. I believe we have the formal resignation from Richard at this point to consider. And at this point, I would like to. Did I get cut off again?
No.
Oh shit, sorry about that.
Sorry, nodding your head.
Yeah, I'm so, I'm really sorry about that. Um, Richard, if you, I turn it over to you actually for the opportunity to speak if you wish regarding anything in your packet.
God, I, I'm, I think I let the council know that I'm moving back to Virginia to be with family. Um, I, I have only, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve on the community. I only have two regrets. One is because of the Brown Act. I never really had a chance to go out to dinner with fellow council members because it might have the impropriety or view that I was attempting to change a vote or influence someone. So that, that's a misgiving on my part. I, you know, Brown Act has a benefit to the community, but I really missed out on getting to know the council members a bit more closely. And the second regret I have is initially joining HARP. The organization to me, as I got to work with them at the beginning, seemed to have some racial undertones and I became quite uncomfortable with it. I represent an independent, critical thinker and I appreciate the ability to be on the council and to be on different committees and try to become a change agent. But it's been an honor to serve. It's been one of the most interesting things I've done outside of my career and, uh, and I look forward to perhaps when I move to Virginia, supporting a local government again. But thank you for the opportunity. That's, that's all I can say.
Well, you certainly have instituted change. So for that, I'm grateful. Um, and we will do our best to fill your seat as it empties at the end of this meeting. Uh, so we are in need of a counselor. Uh, the term will expire December twenty twenty-two. So roughly a year and some change on the council must reside in city limits, must be a registered voter. In case of appointment, the new member must be affirmed by a majority vote of the remaining council members. So at this point, we are calling for uh, folks to volunteer, but I also want to turn it back to the council for any closing comments or comments rather for Richard.
I'd like to, I'll make a couple of comments. I, I am, I mean, Richard's been a fantastic addition to the, to our council and I really appreciate how you organize. I organize things and you're taking things on. You've been a, a a big help of trying to figure these things out. And in the process, I've been very reasonable about things when maybe we didn't agree. And I, I really appreciate that. So good luck in the future. Thank you very much for being part of this. And thanks for some of the changes you made. I think you've been a great, a great service to the city.
Thanks, Jack.
Yeah, thank you, Richard. I've enjoyed working with you. We've seen the same on some, on some items and opposing on other items and I've never felt like you took it personally or um, you know, would never speak to me again if you saw me walking down the street. So I appreciate that. And I wish you all the best. And when you see Patrick back in Virginia, please tell him I said hi. I think of them often as they were my neighbors just down the alley and I, I miss those guys watching your grandkids run around in the, in the, uh, in the yard. So good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Richard. Um, I've pretty much seen with you. I, I, most of these things go on a couple of these subcommittees together. Um, so I guess we got to know each other on Zoom a lot because most of them seem to last more than four or five hours. So, um, yeah, we got to know and I, I appreciate, um, everything you did. You definitely used the empirical method you approach with it and you're a lot more organized than I am about like note taking and, and things like that, follow-ups. So I appreciate that. So yeah, you'll definitely be missed and I, I hope that that next person is, is comparable.
Thank you.
And I just want to say from a staff perspective that we appreciated everything that you did. And, uh, and actually, you know, some of these charts that you prepared and so on, I mean, it's, uh, something that will be missed by staff because it really was very helpful. And certainly before you leave, like I said, I wanted to have a couple of our employees meet with you to talk about how the charts are prepared and how you did your extrapolation and so on. So thank you for all your work and we wish you the best in Virginia.
Thanks, Adam.
And that concludes our October twelfth, four hour, one agenda item meeting. So, uh, thank you very much for the.
Wait a minute, did we, did we approve his resignation and then have future agenda items or public comment on that?
I, yes, you're right.
I know you're worried about getting cut off again, so you want to end it.
No, no, I just, I, I always find it interesting that we have to approve someone's resignation. So.
I'll make a motion that we, we accept Richard Columbus's resignation as city council member.
I'll second that motion.
Um, and if I may, counsel, also direct staff to commence the recruitment process to fill the vacancy by appointment. It's an election you have to make, um, under California law.
Are you happy to amend your motion, Dave?
Yes, I will amend it to include what Attorney Gaines said.
Tom, are you okay with seconding that?
Yes.
Okay, uh, can we just do a, a raise of hands? We don't need a roll call vote. All those in favor, aye. All those opposed, abstentions. All right, Richard, we have officially kicked you off the council at your request. So we are following your, your guidance. Uh, future agenda items, um, at this point, I imagine, um, we'll get an update on the stormwater. Um, continual updates on the stormwater. Other agenda items, though, that folks want to hear?
I'm, I'm still waiting for the resolution to raise the TOT by two percent. We've cost the city enough money over the summer. So I'd like to get that in place.
Thank you for that reminder. I know I keep saying yes. I think this kind of overwhelmed me a little bit. So yes, we'll, we'll get that on the November agenda.
Don't forget the water, like we got to start writing on the water issue. So we need to make sure we're working in that direction right away.
Jack, Eli, if we could just make that a standing, um, order for our weekly, uh, meetings to get updates, um, what is working, what is in place rather, and reviewing that. So if we could just make that a standing meeting, um, item, that would be great. Other future agenda items? I'm sure they'll come up. You always know how to find us. Um, and thank you very much again for all of your time. This meeting is now adjourned.
Good night.